I am
We are waking our people up to let them know that we are the American Indians. Copper colored Indians, baby. A real Indian, American Indian is me, not from Africa. Remember that.
African Americans here, but they recently moved here from places like Kenya, Ethiopia, Zambia, Zimbabwe, and Zaire. But now a brother whose family's lived in this country for generations occupying space in all the locations, New York, Miami, LA, Detroit, Chicago, even if he's wearing a dashiki and sporting an Afro. And if you go to Africa in search of your race, you'll find out quick, you're not an African American, you're just a black American in Africa taking up space.
Alright so, down. Ay, it's too many lies, too many lies. Ay, it's too many lies, too many lies. Yo, it's too many, ay, it's too many, yo, it's too many. It's too many lies, look in my eyes, they know I'm the truth. Knocking them down every time I step in the booth. We ain't got a lot, they know we the vibe, we living in proof. It's young conscious, shoot my life a movie, I live in a spoof. Ain't no sticking around, I'm on the move, I'm chucking the deuce. Yeah, it's only us two, so you know we copping that coupe. We on the roof, smoking dope, look at the view. Yeah, we used to chill on the stoop, now we out here breaking the news. You really could do, cuz we ain't got nothing to lose. We ain't switch side with no cruise, we just stayed out of the loop. Now we out here letting it loose, every shot we took it was swoosh, gotta get it, ain't no excuse, ain't shit left to prove. Ay, yeah, ay, it's too many lies, too many lies. Ay, it's too many lies, too many lies. It's too many, ay, it's too many, yo, it's too many. Ask them a real question, yeah, I bet it's all lies. Ay, they won't cross that line for a fact, that's off sides. Too much penalties when they run his back, run his fines. Ay, could have been here with us, but we do not know no God. She gon' try to whip and let me park it in the driveway. They just want the praise, want the praise like they Yahweh. Getting so much bread, so much rag, getting a ride away. We done already won, yeah, that's worth the ride away. But they still lying right through their teeth and they still hiding behind many truths they was denying. Watch my every move, tell them keep smiling, leave that shit on scene, I ain't replying. Less I know you, that don't mean I'm Polly's butt, that just mean I'm Polly's bed. All y'all I probably stood on the fars, all cause more times I probably should. I don't know nobody like us, you see how much time it took? Ay, it's too many lies, too many lies. Ay, it's too many lies, too many lies. It's too many, ay, it's too many, yo, it's too many. Yeah. Conscious. Matic. Alright, so. Far where I come from. I sit and wonder about the times that it made sense, but nowadays I don't worry about what's past tense. My younger days, I used to hang around with mad friends. If we just fell out, I don't really know what happened. A lot of people come around and keep you stagnant, distraction. So, yeah, don't show them no compassion. We was really out here grinding, really rapping, stacking them Franklin's, them Grin's, and them Jackson's. Imagine if we would've never chased our passion, we probably would've never knew what happened. They was all just talk, we showed action. Once they leave, don't you let them back in. Just pack up all their stuff and send them packing, I'm blacking on anybody thinking they could act up with me. This vibe ain't for free, cuz where I'm at in life, I'm only focused on me. Know the self, know yourself, focus on your health. They don't wanna help, then fuck it, do it by yourself. Don't give them no excuse to put you on the shelf. If it's me, myself, and I, then it's no one else. Yeah, self-love is the best love. It's the people always give, they never get love.
Hey, I know that was a quick cutoff. Hey, let me take the banner down. I don't know what I'm doing here. I got a lot going on back here. Let's see, where are you? Oh, okay, so, we are here. Hello, everybody, thanks for coming out. Y'all smashed the like button. We got nine hundred and four people watching already. I knew it was gonna be lit cuz of who's on the panel especially. So, I have with me today friends in the chat, y'all keep it professional. I have President and Pro temp City of Bridgeport Council Ernest Newton II, who was also a former representative and Senator for Bridgeport, Connecticut for a lot of years. So, I mean, he went in politics as a young, very young man, but I'm gonna let you, um, I'm gonna let him tell his life story on about his life, who is a pillar to our community. And I'm so honored to have him here on the panel with me, cuz it's not often that we get Senators, Representatives, um, Councilmen on our channels. So, you take the floor.
Let me first say thank you. I know you've been trying to reach me for a while to do your show. And I'm just grateful that today is that day, that I could come and share with you. You know something about me, you know, people only read, when you read stuff, it's always slanted. You know, I started when I was in my twenties.
Wow.
I graduated from a black college, I'm the first to graduate from college in my family. And I went to Winston-Salem State University.
Where is that at? Where is that at, Winston-Salem? Okay, okay, wow, okay.
And so, I got exposed to black colleges because I was in a program called Upward Bound.
I remember that back in the day.
Was at UB. And so, God by the name, God rest him, so Ernie Parker and a bunch of other people would take high school kids that were juniors and seniors back in the eighties and the seventies, really because I graduated in seventy-four. So, in the seventies, we got exposed to college. And I have to say, the class of nineteen seventy-four sent more Afro-American kids to black colleges like Winston-Salem State, Norfolk, Virginia Union, all those colleges we were exposed to. And, um, I came back home in the eighties, in seventy-nine, I got a teaching job, my degree was in music. I taught at Eastside Middle School Music. And I stayed there until probably the eighties, eighty-one. In our community, people do, we can't like today, I wanted to make a difference. And in nineteen eighty-one, I got elected to the city council at the age of twenty-five.
You're young.
Now, I had two other brothers who graduated from Norfolk State and one from Norfolk and one from Jackson State in Mississippi. The late Clem Young, who we just lost a few days ago, passed away in San Ballin. In eighty-one, I became the first black president of the city council as a freshman legislator. That's unheard of. Because you had three well-educated brothers who felt it was time for a change. It took a long battling, twenty-seven ballots, but I won. And I stayed there until nineteen eighty-one. Then in nineteen eighty-eight, I ran for the city council, not city council, but for state rep. I stayed in the legislature for seventeen years. While I was in the House, I became Deputy Speaker of the House, which means you're fifth in line to be in government. I put a lot of work in, I was Deputy Majority, Deputy Assistant Deputy Majority, I did the work. We brought a lot of money back to Bridgeport. We bought, I think, thirty-five million back and forth. At that time, the ball field and the arena, which houses now in the amphitheater, it took the ball field out. So, when I look at my life expectancy and what I've done from a short period of time to a long period of time, I've been over twenty-seven years fighting for our people. As you all know, in two thousand and five, I resigned from the Senate. Two thousand and six, I was sentenced to four and a half years. I came home in twenty-ten to Beverly Hills and Waterbury. And I think I shared this with you earlier, I didn't understand what God was preparing me for. And why I say that is, today, as I talk to you sitting in my office, I learned what's called the Bridgeport Reentry Welcoming Center here in Bridgeport. We have a contract with DOC. And so, everybody that's getting out of prison within the next six months or a few days, we're in contact with them. And so, when they come home, we already know what they need. The point I'm making, you never know what God has in store for you. And why I say that, people coming out of prison, I don't want you talking to them about what you think you know. When they come out and I tell them my number was, one-six-three, one-six, that's your one-four, you know why that's important to them? Cuz they gotta know. Everybody go to prison, gotta know. So, it breaks me out. So, now I understand God was preparing me to help us. And we've seen over five hundred people who have come out of prison. They're productive members of society, they're working, they have a place to live, they're back with their families, they're not a citizen rate, it's less than thirty percent.
Wow.
Women, they're going back to prison. But I just say that because I've been blessed. I ran for city council in twenty-seventeen, and I've been there ever since.
Wow, I gotta give you your bomb drops because that's, that's your bomb drops.
Now, as you all know, I just ran for the Senate and I lost. And you know what my constituents said to me? They said, "Ernie, you know why we didn't vote for you? Cuz we need you to stay in Bridgeport. If you go to Hartford, we can't touch you as much."
Yeah, that's true.
You're in Bridgeport fighting for us, we know we got a champion to fight for us. And I thought about it, it's, "Ernie, you've been a senator, you've been a state president."
Yeah, you have.
Yes, you've been a city council member, guess what? Stratford Avenue in the East End is beginning to change. A supermarket, a grocery store, a bank, a gas station, new housing, we never had that. Till I got back on the city council with the help of the East End NRZ and my counterpart Anita Martinez. They said, "We need you in Bridgeport." And it makes sense, honestly, you know what they said? If you would've went to Hartford, somebody else would've taken credit for all the hard work you put in. So, that's who I am, you know? I thank God that he's allowed me to help so many people. And that's my reason. So, that when I leave this earth, I want God to say, "Well done, thy good and faithful servant. You were faithful over two things, now I'm making you loyal over many." So, that's why I do what I do. So, if I left anything out, like I said, I'm an open book.
Okay. Okay, so, what I'm gonna do, and how do you like to be addressed, President? You don't want me to call you Senator Ernie or President Ernie?
All my constituents call me either two things, and I'm gonna let you in on a secret. If you really know me, my nickname is Mickey. So, I tell all my constituents, "You call me Ernie, you ain't gotta call me Councilman, no type, cuz I'm one of you." I ain't changed, but I make them other people call me Councilman Newton. But not my people.
Okay, Ernie, Ernie it is. Okay, so, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read an article, and it's not that long. And it's from, it's a newspaper article, it's not about you. I'm gonna read you a newspaper article, and this goes really into what you're doing for our community. And I wanna take you back to nineteen twelve, when they printed this in the newspaper, it's a primary source. We know all newspapers are primary sources. I'm gonna read it, it's a little lengthy, but not to the point where you can't bear it. It's just, it gets right to the point of what I need. Now, where'd it go? I'm gonna read this to you, I gotta take this banner down, cuz then I can't read the bottom. But I do have my other Fear You banner up. But it says Negro Race Has Billion In United States. And this is July nineteen twelve, it's a newspaper. And it says, "Return Of Colored People To Dark Continent Is Impossible, Owing To Material Progress Made By Them." It is unannounced. And it goes, "Disenfranchise The Negro And Send Him Back To Africa." That's a question, disenfranchise the Negro and send him back to Africa? And this goes into saying absurd, impossible. More than a billion dollars' worth of United States real estate, which he owns in his own name in the United States, is not easily to be taken from him. Besides, the Negro is not an African, he is an American. Africa, African, is a misnomer. Why try to send him to a country which is not his own? So, said Dr. J.R. Hawkins, North Carolina Secretary and Commissioner Of Education For The African Methodist Episcopal Church, a delegate to the General Conference At The Allen Chapel. Dr. Hawkins has made a study of the business status of race in connection with regular work as one of their foremost educators. It will probably, it probably will startle the world when it realizes that we have acquired in the last fifty years over one billion in real estate, Dr. Hawkins said. And that is only the beginning of the rapid forward march which the Negro is making as a businessman. The Negro could not help being a businessman, he was surrounded with it in the years of slavery. He was taught how to drive a bargain in horses or real estate, even if his master didn't teach him how to read and write. Now, master is now changed to head of household, the language changed. There are four hundred self-supporting newspapers, this is in nineteen twelve, daily and weekly owned and published by Negroes in the United States. Three thousand physicians have been graduated from Negro and white schools and are now practicing among their people. Two thousand lawyers have been admitted to the bar in the United States Courts Of Justice, and three hundred and eighty authors are found among our race. We own forty-one schools and colleges, representing an investment of thirty-eight million, and forty-five million has been spent in church property for Negroes. Negro men own and control fifty-one banks, which are prosperous and flourishing, and six hundred and fifty thousand has been invested in Negro libraries. And it is significant that in the Southland, Negroes own a hundred and eighty thousand farms, on which fifty years ago, they toiled to the creek of the slave drivers' whip. The Negro is a born American, and he feels it is his country. Africa has no call for him. It is as a fairy tale to him. Pestilence and disease are not common in Africa, are uncommon in Africa. But America nurtures him and makes him strong, and he likes it and intends to stay in it. The doctrine is being taught to our hundred, one point six hundred and fifty million children in the public schools. The Negro does not ask for any special legislation in his favor. He is willing to take the chance and in confident, and ends confident that he can bear his own burden as well as the white man. And toward that end, we are arriving to educate our ignorant poor, make healthy the weak, and to help more Negroes to own their own homes and farms. So, that's an article that was written before Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, everybody. So, my question to you, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, history is history. Why do you think they don't want our history being taught in school? Think about it.
Because they're gonna know who the original people are of this land.
That's right. And no matter what they try to do, we still rise.
Yes, we're very.
And you think about all the accomplishments blacks have made to this country. We built this country. And so, you know, when I look at that, that's part of the history that they don't want nobody to know. Okay, and that's the way it is, you hear schools taking these books out because they don't wanna feel guilty for what they've done all these years. But one thing for certain, too, for sure, history is history. And so, they cannot take anything else away from us. You can stop it from being read to your kids, but history is history. And you just think about all the inventions that black people put together. Okay, so whether they like it or not, we're part of the fabric, and there's nothing they can do about it.
That's right. So, um, like I said, we're not gonna go into my, you know, belief of who we originally are, that's not what this show is about today, but you already know that I identify as American Indian, and so do you. And so do you, because your background, you know who you are, we're not even gonna talk about that unless you wanna share it.
Well, it's alright. My grandmother was a Pierre Indian, my father is from the islands. And father died when he was thirty-four years old.
Oh, wow, he's very young.
And my brothers and sisters, we grew up on welfare, but we didn't know we were poor, we didn't know what poor was.
I don't think anybody knew.
Mom always had a plate at the table. So, my history of learning it, my father was from a place called Waycross, Georgia. And one time I said, "Waycross, Georgia, what's Waycross, Georgia?" And he said, "It's Waycross, Georgia, it's closer to Florida borderline." But we have a rich history. And what really hurts is that when you see young people today, you know what, I can't do an era. My mother would've killed me if I would've worn my pants down below my butt.
That's Boomer Generation and Generation X.
They would've killed, my mother would've killed me. But the sad part is, is that these kids are bright. They're smart, anybody listen, anybody that can read can, listen to a song and repeat word for word, it can't be done.
Facts.
Think about it. But we just gotta channel that energy in a different means, in a different way. So, as I said before, I've been on this journey a long time, fighting to try to improve the quality of life for our people. Because you need a father, you need somebody to stand up. I've been doing it for over thirty years.
I know, I watched you.
And the good thing is, is that I see people wanting to do better. You know, I look at the East End where I grew up at. I don't wanna leave it the way I found it when I was a kid. We had everything we wanted, right? And we didn't have to go out in the East End to buy nothing.
Facts.
And it's coming back, it's gonna happen. And I'm just grateful that, I don't listen to a lot of nationism. I march to my own drumbeat because I know that if God be for you, he's more than the world against you. And I know that I wouldn't be standing today if it wasn't for the faith I have. So, that's how I've been doing, I, you know, I was talking, my head is bloody, but it's never bowed. And the only one that can be true is you. So, you know, that's a little bit about me. You know, I go to Mount Erie Baptist Church where the pastor is Dr. M.D.L. Bennigan. Preaches a word of hope, not condemnation. And that's why I stay so strong, because it's faith, it's my faith. And if I didn't have it, I wouldn't be here today. You see what I'm saying? So, you know, back in the day, your parents made you go to church whether you liked it or not. Today, it's a lot different, you know, it's a lot different today.
Yeah.
So, what else, tell me what else you like.
Okay, so, here's my, here's the question I have, the first question, I don't even know where to start. Okay, I, you know, I just think we're being overloaded with immigrants, that's a problem.
Bro, let me ask you a question.
Okay, yeah, here we go. Now you really about to see Ernie Newton.
The United States of America, think about this.
Yeah, I know, it's a nation of immigrants.
The lady hauling the thing up in the air, wailing people for a better life. And you know why they, you know why they upset now? Because it's black and brown people trying to get in. We didn't have no problems when Irish came, the Italians came, when the Jewish community came. We didn't have no problems when Irish came, the Italians came, when the Jewish community came. But now you see people that look like you and me trying to come to this country. And now all of a sudden, we got too many people coming into this country. This is a melt, America is the melting pot. So I gotta check you on that because we didn't say that to no other race that came in here. So I can't let you do that to us because we didn't say to no other race. Everybody came for a better way of life.
Okay, so, all right, let me start from here.
Bro, stop. Tell me why you said that, first of all, because I gotta understand.
No, it's okay. Could you be, you know? No, no, you're fine. Ernie, you're fine. You're being. You're being, when you do that, you're being the Ernie I know. And it's okay. We're just dialoguing. I'm gonna say this, all right? When I was born, when we were born as a people, we were told we were Democrats. We didn't have an option. We were told by Democrats, "Oh, don't vote for Republicans. They don't help poor people. They don't like brown people. They don't like black people. Do not. They do not wanna help you. They hate black people. They're racist and they're the KKK." These are the things that the Democrats have put in our heads about Republicans, all right? And I know you recall that. They, the minute, "No, don't vote for no Republican," you know? And you have to ask yourself what that, I like what the, I literally was told this even when I was a union steward. I was liking what some of the Republicans were saying that they wanted to institute, implement in our country. So a Democratic woman said, "Are you crazy? You know, vote for him." I said, "Well, he wants to do this." And then I come in YouTube and learn about, more about our history as a people, including our racial identity. And I, I, all my younger years, I have been in politics. I even tried to run for governor. I know you've seen that. That, okay, that was just a great scare. That was a scare because they thought I was gonna get all my Lloyd's people. But I backed out because I lost Willie, you know, and so I backed out. I would have been running against this current governor, as a matter of fact. But I worked hard for the Democrats. And every negative thing that they told me about Republicans, they were the culprits. Now, I'm not saying Republicans is peaches and cream, but everything they told me all my life about Republicans, they were indeed the culprits. They're racist. They told us that the Republicans started the KKK. No, they didn't. The Democrats started the KKK. And we went and found that. And I'm like, wait a minute, they're the ones who started the KKK. Everything, negative thing they told us about Republicans was negative. But it was them. They're the racists. I've suffered most of my pain all my life from racist Democrats, keeping me from job promotions, passing me over. I am a brown woman. And it's just a rap. And union representation horrible. Until the point where I just like, you know what? I'm done with Democrats. It's obvious. This is who's been holding me back in my life, still to this day. Evilness. But I sit back and like you, I went out of my faith. I sat back and I said, "You know what? Maybe God just don't want me. Maybe he just want me to stay right where I am until I decide to start a new life." I sit back and I tell you, the people that hurt me in my life, I sit back and they're either dead, watch them die, or just be shot down, even worse than what I was. So that's the way I live life now. I said, "You know what? They wanna continue to do these evil things to me. I'm just gonna sit back and watch it happen to them, dig their own graves." And that's what I do now. But anyway, I made it. I, 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 hold up. I'm almost finished. I'm almost done. So I said, "You know, I'm tired of the Democratic Party. When Malloy went out, I said, 'That's it. I like this guy who's coming in, Trump.' I listened to him. I'm like, wow, I was like, this guy is funny, but he's intelligent. He's a businessman, and that's probably what we need." So I denounced the Republican Party, I mean, the Democratic Party, and became Republican. And I've been on the Trump ticket and I'm still on it. And I really think that we need a business-minded president. I do not support Kamala. She's only black, this is, I'm telling you my personal opinions, and then you can go in on me.
All right.
I don't support Kamala because she's only black when she's injected by a black man. Let's go back, because she was dating Montel Williams. Then after that, she dated Big Willie. She's this black girl. This woman is from India. She's one of them dot Indians. They don't like us at all, especially American, your average Shakretia woman, me. I don't deal with them. I don't like her. I don't want her to win. I hope she doesn't win, and I'm campaigning against her. I want Trump back in office. I believe he deserves a second term, just like Obama, because he's not one of us either. He is indeed what you call today an African American. He's the real African American. Because he can prove it. His father's Kenyan and his mother's white European. So he's not the same Indian or North American brown man like me. We just have the same color of skin. So now I'm gonna let you take it and I'm gonna relinquish my mic, cut my camera off. For a minute while you go in. You go in.
No, I mean, people are entitled to their opinion. But let me say this. Let me say this. The young lady that's running for president, Kamala. Her mind is thoning. Her father is Jamaican. Now, that's black. I don't know what you call it. That's black. Mother of another nationality. Donald Trump, I'll take ten bad Democrats. Let me take somebody like Kamala. Now, you said you support him. If President Obama, President Obama, had done half the things that Trump has done, they probably would have tried to lynch him on the White House law. Anytime you hear me. And let me remind you, he got forty-three and thirty-four indictments. You all wanna beat up on people who are felons, but yet you could have a person run for the highest office in the land with thirty-four federal indictments. No black person would have ever been able to do that. All right, I, you know, I respect people for their opinions. But there is nothing you can say to me. But Donald Trump has turned the clock back on a woman's right to choose what's best for her own body. Think about that. Turned the clock back, something that women fought for, country, the right to vote. He wants to turn that clock back. So you may be upset with the Democratic Party. That's okay. But there's nothing you can say to convince me that Donald Trump, think about this. If you had thirty-four indictments, been indicted, you wouldn't be able to find a job sweeping the streets. But you see what he did? He set the courts up, did everything, and now look where we are. I mean, trying to overturn elections that, I mean, this is dumb. This ain't no damn dictatorship. He thinks he's Hitler or somebody. And it's gonna hurt us in the long run. You may hate Democrats. But I'm telling you right now, just, just look at what's happening. The clock is being turned back on our families. You're one. You need to tell me that I need to tell you what's good for your body. That's unheard. Listen, I don't, I mean, maybe I'm missing something. Maybe I'm slow. But by you not seeing this, it affects millions of women. It wasn't long ago before women had the right to vote. Think about that. So I ain't no fan of Donald Trump. And I'll tell you this, if the Million Man March, remember that Million Man March? If we tried to storm the White House that day, they would have been, they would have been bringing bags, putting us in it. Okay? What he did to democracy, just think about it, was wrong, and he thought it was a joke. Now, maybe I'm wrong. Okay, maybe I'm wrong. But there's nothing you can tell me about Donald Trump now. Okay? Because no black person, Obama could not have run for President of the United States or Kamala with thirty-four indictments hanging over her head. So that's kind of America we have. And it's wrong. Out there, what nobody says is definitely wrong. That he's allowed to be able to run for president. Unheard of. But no other black person or Hispanic person or brown, whatever you label it, never would have been able to run for the highest office in the land. As a president. Being indicted. Think about that. So I ain't no fan of Trump, because anytime you tell, that's like me telling my wife what she can do and can't do. Think about that. And it's wrong, and he's wrong for doing it. And I know you're angry with the party. But please don't sell Donald Trump to our people. Because if Donald Trump had his way, listen to me, if Donald Trump had his way today, you think he wouldn't try to send black people back to Africa? Now, he's already attacked people at the border. They're criminals. They're thieves. They're... But it was all right for his family to come here. There were, his wives are immigrant. You can't, you can't pick and choose. America's an immigrant country, whether you like it or not. A lot of people came from other parts of the world to vet themselves in America. Except us. We didn't come here by choice. We're the only race that didn't come here by choice. So we just disagree on that a little bit. Because it's scary to think that people will, and the reason people are coming in, because he's a businessman. Because he blew the whistle to say you can say whatever you wanted to say about Jews and Negroes. Anytime you watch on TV, remember when there was Jews, Jews won't replace us and are marching around the college campus? Anytime he said there were good people on both sides? Something's wrong with him. Okay, something's wrong with him. So I ain't no fan of Trump. Kamala is black. Okay, because all of us got something mixed in us. Whether you believe it or not, we all mixed with something. Her father is Jamaican. Last time I checked, they were black. So we can't pick and choose who she wants to be today or who she wants to be tomorrow. She's black. With her mother, that's nothing. So you can't say that she just wanna be black. That's not fair. Because that's what Trump's saying. So I don't want you drinking the Kool-Aid, all right?
Are you relinquishing the mic?
Yes, I.
Okay, so I'm about to tell you this now, because I love you as my elder in my community. But at this moment, hit up, goddamn! Oh, you about to get it now. I got to give you the thunder. You know how hard it was?
I know, sis.
Sitting here and listen to that. It's time. Now, I'm gonna act, because I remain silent unless you wanna say something else. I would want to speak my, you know, I wanna give you my perspective.
Yeah, and I respect you. I do.
Right. I know you do. I know you do.
Everyone is entitled to how they feel. I'm not here to. But I want you to look at the bigger picture.
I'm not, I don't know if you got these for, I'm coming for you right now. Oh, elder, I got to come for you. I got to give you, I got to give you. Oh, I gotta, I gotta drop my bombs now.
I'm sorry.
So you might want, hold on. All right, so I'm gonna have the elder release mute his mic and, you know, I'm gonna give you my perspective. Okay, one of the things that you said, you used the word hate, that I hate Democrat. I do not hate Democrats. That's a harsh word. I do not hate Democrats. There are a lot of great Democrats. Like I told you, I love Governor Malloy. I don't care what anybody thinks about him. I love Governor Malloy. His family's great. I met his family. I campaigned for him for both times he was in office in our state. Now, I don't personally know or been involved in any Democratic, you know, campaigning, because I left the party. This current governor, I don't know much about him. I do know he's a nice man and everybody loves him. A lot of people do love him. So I don't have anything negative to say about him at all. I wasn't part of his team, you know, and I just stepped away. So now it's my turn, because I had to sit back and digest first. You clearly already said that your family is Indian and, you know, because of North Carolina and your Barbadian pops. I already know that, because you look like them. So we're not Afro-Americans. I am not, flag on the plague. I am not Afro-American. Those were one of the racial identities that they gave us. So I am American Indian. And I don't believe in the Kute Kente story. Because that, in our community coming up, we didn't learn about Africa, nothing, until the movie Roots came out. That's when we learned about Africa. So we didn't come here. We were already here. Isaiah Thomas even said that, and then they offed him from that show. We, our history here is before fourteen ninety-two, we were always here. So I just wanna clarify that, because everybody in this community truly identifies as who we really are. Our race identity has been hidden, and we went and found the government old records, like that article I read. Clearly tells you, we're not Africa, and the ignorance of the people to say, "Send them back," that's only because a lot of. the people to say, send them back, that's only because a lot of foreigners come here in the nineteen hundreds, and they write articles, and their ignorance allows them to think, just because we have brown skin, that we got snatched out of Africa and brought here on slave ships. Okay, for, keep in mind, there were no motors, so how is a ship gonna blow from Africa to North America and make it through the Bay of the Strait? They can't even make it now with today's technology. So, that's just a little short story that I wanna clear up. We are Aboriginals of this soil. Next thing, um, like I said, I do not hate Democrats. I just don't affiliate myself with that party anymore. Um, President Obama, I don't see him as a one of us. I don't hate him, but he is clearly a, what you would call today, an African American. We don't share the same story. His father is literally in Kenya, and his mother's European. Um, so, he is not one of us. Um, when Obama was in office, he didn't do a damn thing for us. He had an agenda, and his only real agenda was to, um, pass the LGBT agenda, and that's known fact. Nothing against LGBT community. I don't care. I, I do not, I have nothing against how people, who people sleep with in their bed, and what choice of sex they are, that I don't get into that. You know, I don't condemn it. I don't do that. And it's not done over on this channel. We all have, uh, uncle named Peaches and an aunt named Melvin. So, whatever, whatever, I don't care. That's not why you're here today. But his, and then the healthcare, it's a hot mess. It, it's, it's horrifying. Um, so, I don't see anything he's done at all. Kamala, first of all, she has brown skin. Okay, but I don't believe, we, we are not the same. She is not the same. A normal American Negro is Martin Luther King, Malcolm X. Okay, those are mainland Indians. Kamala is not the same as us. No matter how you slice it. A real mainland Negro. She is not a Negro. She did not go through Jim Crow laws. She, we don't have the same story as her. We don't. She didn't go through Jim Crow laws. She is not from the South. We have a different history here. People, Europeans came here and enslaved us, and our families, we were our own owners, and I just read you to the article of all the farmlands we owned in the South. Our fathers and grandfathers were the masters of their families. When you hear the beatings of the whip from the master, it did not come from the white man. That came from our grandfathers and grandparents beating us on our farms, like they do today. I mean, kids get beaten with stenching cords back in the seventies. That's the beatings that they're talking about. Not, I, I, I mean, come on, Pitcher, um, L, L Koojay, Big Meach, you on a farm, and fifty other Negroes. And, I, I mean, you gotta put these stories in its pers- perspective. And I, we have to keep it a buck. You're not gonna tell me that these guys are on a farm, and one white guy with the one shotgun is gonna control these boys right here. They don't even, white people are even scared to come in our community, so I be damned if that story about the white men whooping us and beating us into slavery is true. It's not. It's all been a lie. Um, uh, uh, so, that's that, a- a- as far as history. Our history was told in reverse. We understand who we are today. Okay? Um, Kamala put a lot of brown men in prison, to her track record. Harsh policies. I don't know how you could support this woman. As far as Trump with the indictments, I have my personal opinion about that. That's some chumped up shit. I, for as long as I worked with the Democratic Party, I know how they operate. I know how they operate. I was there with them. I don't feel those charges were substantiated when it comes to Trump. Okay? I don't. I'll never ever believe it until I drop dead. And I, I'm keeping it a buck. I don't believe the charges that were brought against him. I don't. And if I were president, I'd immediately, immediately relinquish any charges that was ever against him. When Trump was in office, people that looked like me owned businesses, they were able to open businesses, gas prices was down, we were still booming in America. We were doing great. And everything, the gas prices were down. He said, we, we, we were using our own oil here, instead of getting it from the Middle East. He put up the war. Yes, this country is a nation of immigrants. It truly, it is. But we Indians have been fighting for them to stop bringing immigrants in the country. And it continues to go on. Immigrants are coming over here and living off our hard-earned tax dollars. Okay? My husband dies, right? I can't collect his social security until I'm sixty-two years old, sixty years old. But an immigrant can come over here and get an EBT card on my husband's tax dollars, apartments and everything. Because they're refugees. But what about when the American is in a crisis? You don't think it's a crisis if my, when my husband dropped dead, and now he's no longer a support for my home? I'm in financial crisis? So, again, the immigrant is put before the first American. I say first American, because that's who I am. So that's telling me that this Democratic governor and, uh, uh, what do you call it? Dem- Democratic president, don't give a damn about the first Americans. So Americans are put on the back burner. And immigrants are allowed to prosper off of our hard-earned tax dollars, and we're told, as widows, pull yourself up from your own bootstraps. We're gonna use raised money, so that this immigrant can come in here and have a great life. That's what the Democrats are doing to us. And then there's more. How in the hell are our people to be able to afford these newly renovated, reconstructed commercial properties, changing them into condo-like townhomes? affordable housing. There's not one person in our hoods that can afford to live in these units. These units are throwing three thousand dollars for efficiency, and they're building them right in our hoods. My question is, what are, uh, 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 how does the local municipalities feel? They're building units right in our communities in a face, and they're not for building fifty-five-year-old and up units, supposedly be for the fifty-five-year-old and up retirees. They're even keeping granny out. Granny can't afford to live in these fifty-five and up communities. Now, I looked up and found the role of our councilmen in our local municipalities. What say they to these expensive projects being built in our hoods? And I'm gonna relinquish and let you answer, and then I think one or two people, um, if you don't mind, if they can come up and ask you questions later on.
Let me, let me answer this here.
Well, you got it right there. I'll relinquish my mic.
Let me, let me say this. Because of the epidemic, a lot of things happened. A lot of people moved in from all over the world, buying their property. Most municipalities, based on state statute, had to set up what's called fair rent components in their municipality. Which gave, which will give people that live in these places. And the landlord comes in and projects you ran up three thousand, four thousand dollars, you have a place to go to dispute. And there's a lot of people coming in, they're not fixing up none, they're just stepping up the ranch. So that's one thing that we have, um, tried to make sure that there's some, they have an outlet to go to now to address those kinds of concerns. Um, I mean, you said a mouthful of a lot of things. Um, but just remember this. Every nationality who's ever come to America were immigrants. Came for a better life. America is a place where people came for a better life. And we can't pick and choose and discriminate against those that come before us. Because we didn't set those standards. When Jewish, when Irish all came over to find a better way of life. And that was, that's why the Statue of Liberty is there to welcome people um, to come and to better their lives. That's what America was. And that's what it still stands for, whether you like it, I like it. Supposed to be a place to come, so you can have a better life. Um, here. As far as politics and Trump and all those kinds of things, there's everyone's entitled to who they wanna serve. You know, you have a right to be Republican, Democrat, independent. But as a person who's been involved in politics over forty years, I've seen a lot of things happen. And I've never seen anybody and you might feel a certain way about Donald Trump. I definitely feel a certain way. Cause if we're not careful, he would definitely roll the clock. Which he's already doing. You're a woman. And if you believe that the courts should tell you what to do with your body, that's fine. And I don't think I have a right to tell you what to do with your body. I don't think the courts have a right to tell you what you can do with your body.
Okay, so, let me, I, I need to interject it for a minute. Let me interject, um, Ernie, and, and say this. Okay? Prior to all this abortion, we were having sixteen and twenty kids as a people, as American Indians, on our farmlands. I come from one. My, um, great granny had sixteen children in South Carolina, and they all lived on the one farm. It's big, big farm. Okay? Then we migrated here north, and we still kept, kept up those cultural habits of having a lot of kids. So then, the Planned Parenthood came in all of our hood communities. This is what the Democrats imposed in our communities. They put Planned Parenthoods in our communities, because we, okay? And Puerto Ricans, AKA they're the original Taínos, was having too many kids, um, and cramping up in our hoods like sardines. This is what prior administrations did to us. They put these Planned Parenthoods in our communities to stop us from producing so many children. That's why that was there. And a lot of our people began in the, uh, very early seventies, taking birth control pills to stop Indians from being born. So to me, that was a weapon. Okay? That was a weapon. That's the first evil thing that they did to us. We were, we are naturally supposed to have children. There are so many women that are barren and are disgusted by the alarming rates of abortions, and it ain't, I don't give a damn what your race is. It's alarming to have these butchers coming there, tie our tubes and stop us. So it's not about him telling us what to do with our body. I think if we're supposed to naturally have babies, we should. Okay? It should be our decision. I do believe that. But they imposed those clinics on us, and it was as a weapon to stop us from having so many Negro babies, Indian babies. They always wanted to kill the Indian and save the man. Secondly, Trump, as far as Trump coming into office, wanting to send us to Africa, first of all, we didn't come from Africa. So you can't send us to Africa. You cannot send us. That's why we're still here. Because you can't deport us. We're undeporable. You cannot deport us to a country that is not ours. That article speaks for itself. We didn't come from Africa. When we, when they came, when Trump came here, we were already here. So how are you gonna come in here and deport us to a country that's not ours? That will be World War Three. Cause you're not taking Pookie and Ray Ray off his land. I will probably be like, um, uh, Mr. Jimmy Barbecue in Haiti. I would open the keys to the damn prison, and then there's World War Three. Because I'm telling you right now, that's not Trump's plan. We still got Big Meach on lockdown. Okay? And we're not having it. That will be World War Three. So we didn't come from Africa, and they're not deporting us. We are the American Indians. It's clear. Society knows. Other countries knows who we are. So we're not going back to Africa. Cause we didn't come from there. If anything, we can be, the only way we can be deported from the United States is if they remove us by paper from, from their little thirteen colonies, cause that's all they got. Let's, see, there's a lot about history. Folks don't know. They only got thirteen colonies. Thirteen plantations. We gave them that. And they conquered the land, and our chiefs, okay, agreed to expand it into the fifty states. Our lands, right now, as a people, are being holed by this government and their military. This is why we don't have our lands. Okay? So Trump is not coming in office to do that. I like the idea of putting the border up. I like the idea of Trump wanting to use the resources that we have here already on our own land, like our own oil and gas and everything. We were originally the providers of the world. We didn't need to go to the Middle East to get oil and shit like that. We are the gods of this land. Trump knows it. Everybody knows it. So I do want Trump in office because he has a business mind. During COVID, let's talk about that. Everybody was booming prior to COVID. Everybody had jobs, businesses was booming. Mom and pop stores that's been in existence for years, since I was a little girl was still open. Soon as Sleepy Joe came in office, them Democrats was angry and came in swinging. Put, they wanted rich or poor. Every working-class citizen, every mom and pop store you could think of was closing down. Shut, shut down. That's been in business for years. Small mom and pop stores, they didn't, Democrats didn't give a damn. And you want me to vote for them? I don't ever wanna go through another COVID.
Well, let me say this.
COVID is nothing but, uh, uh,
Let me say this last one.
I'mma let you, but then I want you to let some people, two people come on in.
All right, a lot of people died during COVID.
People die, people die of flu every year.
Let me finish.
Okay.
A lot of people died behind Donald Trump's stupidity with COVID. Anytime somebody tell you to drink, when he tell us to drink? He said, drink, I can't remember what crazy stuff he said. COVID is gonna go away, just drink bleach or whatever the hell he said.
No, but go ahead.
Listen, a lot of people died because of Donald Trump's with COVID. Now, I'm doing it this.
I respectfully disagree.
Yeah, so bring somebody on, let him speak to me.
Okay, all right, I'mma bring him on and I, I, um, I would hope App Power, Straight Smoke would come on and we're gonna keep it professional. Let me put the link in the chat. I don't know if you want to get some water or something while, um, they give them a chance to come up. I'm putting the link in the chat. Um, I'm not gonna let everybody up, but I'll let a few up and I just want you to be professional. But I hope App Power hit the link. The link is in the chat. And that's, let's see, Straight Smoke and App Power. I'mma pin it to the top. And I'll let, okay, who we got? Jersey. All right. There's the link. We got one person. And I'm, I'm gonna control, be a little bit controlling, cause I am, like I told you, a little protective over our leaders here in Connecticut. So let's keep it professional. Um, you got your mic on, um, Senator Newton.
I got, I got broad shoulders. Ain't nothing they can say I haven't heard before.
Okay, I know, I know you. Okay, anybody else want to hit the link? Um, Straight Smoke? Okay, that's okay, Straight Smoke. So let me see who else I can ask. Sachi or, um, uh, let's see, um, Copper Aborigines, if you hit the link? Jersey, hi, how are you? Welcome.
Hello, peace and blessings and, uh, salutations to the brother Ernest. Uh, I was listening back. I think it's a good bill. Whenever you're ready for me to give my questions or statements, I, I, I go ahead and do that.
Go right ahead.
All right. So what we learned from history is that the Democrats started the Dreamco laws. They, 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 they was actually on, online on par with the slavery laws. And, and that we didn't actually start the party. We actually helped start the Republican Party. Uh, we learned that underneath Democrats, they enforced a law called five oh one C three, which partnership with a lot of churches and worked with the government to, uh, ultimately resulted in the bankruptcy of the black communities. And we also learned that in almost all black communities or Aboriginal communities, uh, these were Democratic ran and the statistical crime rates uh, across the board when it comes to Democratic cities were terrible. And wha- what the the thing about the whole Democratic Party is that they try to pander to us to get our vote. But once we, once they end, they don't, they don't do what they kept, they don't, they don't keep to their word. So it makes us look, it make, it makes everybody lose at the end of the day. So lose, lose. Um, Trump said against the journalist and his, his, uh, video with the journalist, I don't know if y'all seen it, national black journalist. He, uh, he said to the journalist, more people died underneath, actually no, he said it in the, in the conversation with Elon Musk. He said, more people died underneath Biden with COVID than they did with underneath his, his, uh, his term. And when we, when we actually look it up, he actually is right. More people die underneath Biden's term and service and term than it did Trump's. So, you know, across the board, when we look, and then when we, when we vote for people out of feeling, we don't get anywhere, right? We, we should vote for people to get the job done. I don't care if I don't like you, make my burger right. I don't care if I don't like you, fix my car right. I don't care if I don't like you, get my, get the job done the right way. If I'm on the team with you and, and we playing with each other, I want you to score the most points. I want you to throw the biggest pass. I don't care if I don't like you or not. Get the job done. We can't vote for people out of, based out of feeling and all these other things. The, the community needs more fathers. And when we promote LGBTQP and other thing, that takes away from men being natural leaders and fathers, not saying that those men can't do it. But, but the, the likelihood of them doing it is less. So, uh, with all those statements that I said, I, I want to ask a question to Ernest. What is the, what is the Democratic Party doing and promise, what, what promises have they ever kept to us that ultimately helped the black community in the greatest way possible? What was their biggest contribution to the, to the quote unquote, black community or the Aboriginal community, whatever people want to call it? What was the biggest thing they promised and they kept to, and it, and it transformed black community for the betterment and everything was good after it? Let me know.
Okay, let me, let, let me just say this. And, and, and some of the statements you made are, are correct that the Democratic Party always promises and go back on their promise sometimes in certain areas. But I, I can say this, that the Democratic Party at the part has stood upon some of the issues such as slavery, such as, you know, black, this black home, black crime things trying to to help navigate what's going on in our communities. Um, I, I don't totally agree that Donald Trump didn't have anything to do with a lot of people dying with this COVID. Anybody that tells you to drink bleach, that'll cure you, something's wrong with that picture. But I, I do think you had the Democratic Party and why so many blacks are affiliated with the Democratic Party is because at least they've always felt that the Republican Party always wanted to turn the clock back on them. And Republicans, you look at South Carolina, you look at some of those states that still believe in the Confederate flag and still believe in those kinds of things that have held Afro-Americans back. There's a good concern why so many Afro-Americans join the Democratic Party because Wallace let you know slavery today, slavery tomorrow, until he had a rude awakening. It took a gunshot wound to put him in a wheelchair. And before he die, he apologized. He said, I'm sorry that I took those stands against black people. He apologized.
Who?
Um, Wallace.
Wallace who?
He was the governor of where was Wallace? I wanted to say Georgia or South Carolina, one of those states, but they put him in, he got shot. He was running for president, got shot. They had put him in a wheelchair and just before he died, he apologized.
Was he a Democrat?
Republican. And he apologized. You remember when Wallace, you remember the girls got, and it was in Alabama? Those five little girls got blown up in the church?
Yes.
Wallace's position was slavery today, no segregation today, segregation tomorrow. And then he got shot. But before he died in his wheelchair, he apologized for his thinking and the things he did against black people all those years.
Okay, that's, that's, um, understandable coming from the South. Okay, you can apologize for being me towards a race of people, but that doesn't mean that he blew the little girls up in the church.
He, he condemned it. He didn't do nothing about it.
Okay, there's a lot of things that go on today that
Klan did, the Ku Klux Klan, the Obama era.
I, I, okay, I understand that, but there's, there's things that Democrat continue to do. First of all, let's get the slavery thing straight. Anybody that has a job is a slave. I think people need to start looking up the definitions of these words. Anybody, if you work for anybody, you are their slave. A slave master is a, a director, a manager, look it up. I am not shit. Back then, back during slavery days, there was not a fiat system, okay? Slavery, they food, shelter and clothing. That's how it was in the South. There was not a fiat. We didn't have money. Okay? We were the slave masters of our own people, Indians enslaved Indians. Okay, all right, so we are, so, okay. So at this point, I'm gonna ask you personally, a personally, do you think that you are indoctrinated and sold in by the Democrats? Do you were indoctrinated by them?
No.
I, I, a lot of their, I, I'm only asking because you stand by a lot of their rhetoric, after what they did to you.
I'm not indoctrinated.
You're speaking their rhetoric though.
Well, but I can say that about me thinking Donald Trump's rhetoric.
I just started, became a, um, Republican, but I'm, you, I'm thinking more wisely. Uh, you know, I, I became a Republican based on my history with Democrats. So I learned, not saying that Republicans are great and peachy, okay, but I like the Republicans' thought process. They want us to work as a people and not be lazy and collect benefits. And I agree with that.
Okay, but just
They want, they want black men to work. They want black men to take care of their families. That's the mindset of a Republican that they don't have to love us, but what they want, we have to agree with. Democrats want to keep us in their systems, whether it's prison or in their handout social programs, making us, crippling us as a people. They don't want us to open businesses. However, Republicans do. So I only ask you that if you're indoctrinated, if you're indoctrinated, because you're still talking, you're talking their horrible rhetoric that never worked for us and why we're still where we are because of Democratic control. I want them all out. They're horrible.
Well, not
But you got it.
Not if, not if my choice is Donald Trump. It's not gonna happen. That's the only choice I had to make.
I've never said, I've never heard Donald Trump.
Here's the point I want to make. Listen to me. There were just, you remember the founding fathers of the, of America? Jefferson, all those guys. Democrats and Republicans, they all were slave owners. They all had slaves. George Washington, all the way down. So Democrats are just as much a hypocrite as the Republicans, cause there was
We assimilated into their, we assimilated as a people. We weren't always part of United States. The South, we weren't always part of their colonial states. We, 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 we didn't become citizens in the United States. We were told that we became citizens. We didn't go through a, a process like normal people do when they come over here. We, as Indians, no, we were slaves to our parents. We were not slaves to white people. This is the problem. This is the story that the Democrats keep teaching, which they need to stop. They were, we, I don't come from a history of slavery. My family owned their own farm in the South. We never were slaves. Slavery again is, um, working on plantations for your own families. It wasn't. If you were owned by a slave master, white slave master in the South, it's because you voluntarily went and contracted with him to be his slave. They didn't come and snatch you. They can't do that today when they see black men. They jump when they come in the damn store. So how are you gonna control them on your farmland? We gotta get away from these fake stories about the white man having this type of control over our people. It just did not happen. I say personally, get off the white man's ass about the slave story, cause it's fake. They're the ones who came over here as indentured servants. You said that in the earlier part of the show, Ernie. So, um, I, I, I ask you that because I feel, I, I see the indoctrination. And you're, you keep speaking slavery, which is not true. We need to get off the white man's back about them enslaving our people, cause that's not how it went. Our people went, our people, and you're, you're in legislature and, you know, they teach y'all this to teach us, but until we stand up, open our eyes and read our books about our history, we're always going to think of the Kute Kinte story, which was a damn lie anyway. Um, Alex Haley was sued for making that story. It was fake. When that story came out, black people all over the world thought they had a damn Kute Kinte in their family. But our grannies set us straight, being very young, saying, no, you're not African, you're Indian. And that's what I'm standing on. We were not slaves. We are Indians of this soil. But I'm, I'm gonna, um, I, I, I am supporting Trump. And, and it's my choice, right? And that's my choice. And
I'm not arguing with you about
And I, I, I could say this. If the rhetoric is true, what you say, Senator Newton, that Trump is gonna come in and send brown people to Africa, then it's going to be a World War Three and I'm prepared for it. Because ain't nobody shipping me out nowhere. I will fight my death. And I don't believe that. If he's gonna ship Africans back, he's gonna ship back real African Americans. Then I, I agree. Get him out of here. They don't need to be on our soil. Get him out of here. I'm not African American. So if he's gonna ship Africans, then, uh, Americans, Africans back to their country, then I'm cool with that. I say go because I'm Indian, this is my land, it's been invaded time and time again. I'm with him.
But he's not saying, send the Irish back.
And like he said, you're gonna come over here, you're gonna come over here through our process. We have a process becoming a citizen. So all, and I, I say this, all the illegal, if I was president, oh, I'd be the worst. Because every illegal immigrant, it would be retroactive if I was president. And back to the Obama administration, that's how far back I would deport people. I would retroactively deport their behinds out of here.
What about the people? Let me do, and I know you gotta go, cause I gotta go, but
No, I, I, I do want Copper Goddess to ask you a question and then
What about, what about the people who came over here? They legal, adjusted, they weren't able to get their citizenship papers and they came over with the understanding, you know how they do it? They marry somebody from America and they become citizens. If you got baby boomers that are struggling to try to become citizens, and those are the ones that we should be helping. The ones that were born here, we should be looking out for. You're right. If you came over here illegally, you shouldn't be over here until you become legal.
I wanted retroactive
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Right, I would retroactively active that deportation all the way back to the Obama administration when they came over here in the droves from when he came in office. When did he come in office? Two thousand eight to current? They'll all be out of here if I was president and I wish Trump would do that. Because that's where I, that's how serious I am about the invasion of our landmass. Okay? We have laws. Okay? We have laws. You, they have, and Kamala Harris has imprisoned men in prison for breaking the law. Okay? She put thousands of our men in prison. Okay, break, wait a minute. She put, hold on one second. I know you don't want me to say this, but I said, she put thousands of our men in prison for breaking the law. So now, these illegal, illegal immigrants, it hasn't its name. They're illegal and they shouldn't be here and they should So now, these illegal immigrants, it hasn't its name. They're illegal and they shouldn't be here and they should be deported immediately. All the way back from Obama administration. Already put out a curse cuz she's not gonna win. I just.
Listen, do you remember when Donald Trump accused these brothers of raping a woman in Central Park? And just got let out of prison. Do you remember that?
No, I don't, but if that's one incident, you know how many white people I accused that did something that didn't do nothing? Because of my ignorance, I'm not opening my eyes, okay? So, one, you're talking one incident, okay? That's probably not true, and you're probably telling the story wrong. So if Donald Trump, if you're watching, if Donald Trump, I'm telling you, if you're watching, correct that story, cuz he's not here, he's not here to defend himself, and that's one.
I do want to hear Copper Goddess, however, he did do that, but he wasn't a politician when he did that. Kamala Harris has did things while she was a politician, while she was in government to people, and she give them long since, longer sentences. The Ku Klux Klan was actually started by Democrats. Uh, the bird, the grand master Ku Klux Klan was a Democrat. Uh, these are Democrats that are pushing this victim mindset and victim mindsets on us, so they can pander to us, so they can vote for us. I don't know what the job of the senator is. I would love to hear what the job of the senator is. I will update a lot of things, but I do wanna hear what Copper Goddess says. I'm sorry for buttoning Sister Bethi. Uh, again, uh, uh, he did do that, but he didn't do that as a politician. That's such a part, such a part five thing. And that's, that's only about one instance out of probably three instances you can name, but he wasn't a politician. So it doesn't, it doesn't really matter. As a politician, that man helped out our people and, 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 and he will help out a lot of people without. They're both, they're both wrong, both parties in my sense. But one party makes people suffer more than other party, and according to Malcolm X, he said the liberals and Democrats do more damage to us than the Republicans. Okay, so I'm sorry about that.
I have to agree with that. So let's go with Copper Goddess and let her ask you your question or make her statement. But I still love you, Ernie. That's not gonna change, but I had to give you the thunder.
I know, I know.
Greetings, uh, Brother Ernest. How are you today? I'm well. Hi, Sister Bethi.
Hi sweetheart, how are you?
I'm fine. Hello, Jersey. I just wanted to keep it political cuz I don't wanna get into the personal stuff about all the lies of it, feud about my president. But, uh, when you go to Trump's website, his policies are plain as day. When you go to Kamala's website, all you have is an offer for donations. The whole website for something that they can tell me that's tangible for my people, but I cannot find one thing. So I deep dove into my own research like we supposed to do as a people because they've been lying for eons to stay ahead of us. So, and to trick us. So I'd just like to read a couple of policies here that are very, very pertinent for our communities as a American Indians who have been stolen, land stolen, identity stolen, culture mocked. But finger turned to us as if we are just the most demonistic, unloving people on the rock. Okay, so the policies, which I'm concerned about children and elders and veterans, that is my, that's who I'm passionate about with the policies. So, policy number one. Seal the border and stop the migrant invasion, which affects everyone in this country, no matter what color. If they are illegal, it is dangerous. They are doing all types of massive crime in the neighborhoods and they do not have to pay the consequences. They get out on no bail. We are watching it daily. Number two, carry out the largest deportation operation in American history. I agree. Before, until this country is correctly status the rightful owners of this land, everybody need to get the hell up out of here. We need to get this motherfucker together. Third one, end inflation and make it affordable to live in America again. Under Trump, we all have to admit, we were moving, things were moving. Even though it was a plandemic, the economy did not shut down, but as soon as Biden got in there, he mandated the bioweapon, which caused the economy to sink. People that didn't wanna do that, they quit their jobs and went to file unemployment, which of course would make the economy fail. Everybody didn't wanna go to work. Next, make America dominate in energy. We are the land of milk and honey. We got enough oil under the rocks in the dirt in this country to supply everybody in the world. They've been lying. Stop outsourcing our manufacturing superpower. My people used to work at General Motors for years, thirty and forty years, and they sent the shit overseas. As far as the veterans, it says, he got so many policies, y'all gotta look it up. Keep women, keep men out of women's sports, which is a win for the children as well because that just passed. Supreme Court knocked that down. No men in women's sports or in the babies with our ba, our babies in the bathroom. That's disgusting.
Thank God for the predominant amount of Republicans that, uh, are the majority of the laws that are being voted on, but you got it, sis. Go ahead.
No problem. Rebuild our cities, including Washington DC. Make them safe, clean and beautiful again. What's wrong with that? Prevent World War Three. Restore peace. Stop the missiles. Defend our constitution, which is where we come in. Once that constitution is looked at as a document that's for this country again, we will get our rightful identity back. March twenty fourth, uh, twenty twenty four, they changed the identity policy. Now the definitions are different. They didn't do that, uh, for nothing. They getting ready to try to erase us again, y'all. They getting ready to try to reclassify us again. We ain't standing for it.
Sure ain't.
We are not gonna stand for it. He also has a policy, if you'd like to homeschool your children, he will give you a monthly stipend for teaching materials, lunches, extracurriculars. I think that's awesome. He is giving the veterans the benefits that they need. No more cutting into the social security to give immigrants our hard-earned work tax money to somebody that just walk across here and think they can just live happily in our country. When they move in the neighborhoods, they don't.
I gotta drop the bombs when it's necessary.
Drop the bomb, sissy.
Go ahead, honey. We reading Trump's policies.
Yeah, and I, I'm just, I'm briefly reading them. It's about sixteen more. That lets you know right there. He ain't on no bull, man. He, his policy over personal feelings, cuz if that's the case, Kamala is cosplaying. You are what your mother is. She's an Indian. Her mama ain't no black woman. Jack the damn word. Her mama's an Indian, and her mother and her father were in communist groups when they were in college. Telling people to go against this country. Radical communist groups. And her husband ain't black. He's a Jewish man, and she don't have no children.
Wow, Indian, turn your camera on for a quick minute. Go ahead, baby, you got it.
She has no children, but she's ready to tell the world that it's okay to cut off the genitals of a child just because they feel like they are some other gender. And they've, she's also approved that there is seventy-two genders, and I only know of two. She also approved that you can pay for said sex trans, trans sex surgeries with your insurance money. When I got family that can't even get no insurance, let alone cut something off that, uh, the good mother gave you. So I just don't understand this woman's policy. If she even is a woman, I do not know that either. We ain't gonna go there, cuz the rabbit hole go deep. But I just think that's disgusting, the things that they keep pushing. And Mr. Ernest, I hear you keep pushing this abortion, abortion. First of all, you ain't even never had no abortion. Second of all, Trump did not say, he has his own personal beliefs about abortion, but he gave the abortion decision to the states. So if you live in a state that does not allow abortion, which was going on prior to him even being the president, then you, if you wanna kill your child, go on somewhere else and do it. It's not hard. Keep your legs closed if you don't want children, cuz it's only, it's simple as that. Stop having unprotected sex, uh, if you don't want a child. Cut it out. Be adult. And, and teenage pregnancy rates are down in this country, so we can, we not gonna blame it on the young children. It's the adults that are being irresponsible, if so. And I'm one of the people that eh, I don't know about the rates and abortion rates. I think that's another play on the, on the, um, American Indian population to, to damn the black woman and American Indian woman to make her feel like she's trying to kill her damn, uh, community off. I don't believe them stats. I don't believe it.
Okay, we got Truth on the piano. You could go ahead, brother.
Just like to say, uh, peace to everyone before you start, True. Uh, shout out, this is Negro out the trenches, original builder. Peace to everyone.
Got you. Peace, brother.
Salute, blissful Wednesdays, everything, uh, good conversation. Man, salute, salute. Uh, you know, man, we just gotta pay attention to what's really going on. How we been manipulated to vote Democrat all these years, and it's always, and it's been real detrimental.
You might wanna roll your window up, Truth. You might wanna roll your car window up.
We're on a panel with the senator.
I know, I, I've been watching. I, I seen what's going on. Uh, salute to him. I appreciate him for coming up. You know, well, a lot of these guys don't even, uh, a lot of times won't even take this type of, uh, they won't even show up to nothing like this. Let's just keep it like that. Yeah.
Yep, yeah, that's better. We appreciate you, Ernie. We appreciate you.
My passion for being angry, I'm just, I'm really, I'm, I'm really afraid for, uh, our children and our elders. That's all my passion.
And we, and we should be, uh, you know, uh, a lot of the most, uh, crime-ridden cities is, uh, fully ran by Democrats from top to bottom. I come from one, Chicago. Uh, has always been a Democratic hub, but they haven't done anything for us. You know, they always like to, uh, do the little, uh, the little ad campaign when they pushing stuff and they put us out at the forefront to make you feel like it's for us, but then when you look in the background, it's really for other folks. Every time there's money allocated for like community building, uh, small business funds and things like that, they try to make it seem like it's for us, but then they throw titles on it like minority. And then when one of us go looking for those funds, you know, they throw so many hurdles in the way for us getting the funds, that by the time we touch the funds, all the damn funds is ran out. I personally have experienced this. You know, while I went down out here in California, San Francisco, one of the most liberal cities in America. You know, they have one of the most dirtiest, stankiest cities in America. It's feces and piss all on the damn sidewalk. It ain't no disrespect to San Francisco. Everybody out there know it. I formed the business under the premise that they allocated over a hundred and eighty-three million dollars in funds to help tackle that problem. They promoted small business, but when I went down there, the only motherfuckers that was getting the business was Hispanics, Asians, and you know, you gotta be homosexual. A straight man coming in there trying to get that business, man, we couldn't even talk to nobody. But we can buy the business license to do business with the city, but the city ain't gonna do business with us, so they basically just taking our damn money. It's like playing the lottery with them. You know, anytime you wanna do business with any city, there's no one, uh, tax, tax ID license or permit that some people put it for the whole state. You have to do it in each individual city in order to do the business that they have set up for those, uh, those locations. Now you have to pay for this. But the thing is, you're paying for this in the hopes that they're gonna honor the words of what they're promoting, and what you come to find out is, is that's not the case. What you have happening is, is these big companies that has their hands in the pockets of these politicians usually get these, uh, these contracts, but by law, they're, they're, they gotta, uh, they gotta outsource thirty-five percent of that to, uh, minority-owned business, women-owned business, LGBT business. And the thing is, a lot of time, it be their own damn people, so they keep the money in-house. So, not only is it a false advertisement of funds and trying to help us grow, they're also, um, allowing others to come in and research the, the resources in our neighborhoods, for instance. Have you noticed like where y'all from, like, it's just be these buildings that just been riding the fuck away, excuse my language, riding away for years and decades, and you just like, damn, and you trying to find out who own it, then you find out who own it. And then you find out that there are actually ordinance that says that the upkeep of these buildings have to be replaced by the owners, but for some reason, the owner is not being held accountable for. Well, what they're doing is they're running a play. They're bringing your property value down, and this was the usher in the gent, uh, gentrification. These buildings has been riding away deliberately and not being forced the upkeeps by the aldermen. We got aldermen in our city and we got councilmen, but aldermen usually handle each, each individual neighborhood, but some people just got councilmen. Well, they're paying the councilman or the alderman to be able to bypass that ordinance and keep that building up for once the gentrification process start happening, then they start building it up or they start selling it. But they wanna allow you to take over it, which they supposed to do. By default, they supposed to take over those type of properties by eminent domain because it has been riding away for so long, but they don't. Why? Because these foreigners are fat in their damn pockets. Another problem what we have is with these politicians, uh, and this senator might be aware of this, is what you have, like especially once again, where I'm from, we have aldermen and councilmen, but one of the requirements is you have to be a resident of the district that you're trying to, uh, run for. So what you have is people come by residents, uh, a resident in the community, right? They're not from there. They don't even live in that motherfucker. They might come through every blue moon to it just to run for that position, and then you wondering why, well, damn, ain't shit being done. We got this black person here. Well, it's because that.
You must be in a bad area cuz you're breaking up, sweetheart.
Oh, my bad. Y'all can hear me better now? Okay, uh, but you know, just to wrap it up, the thing is, what I'm saying is, is that the biggest play, the biggest manipulation has been ran up on our people by the Democratic Party. Their foundation was against us. Not only politically, but violently by force, when you look at the origins of it, and now all they did was same play without being violent, by manipulating you and convincing you that they're on your side, but every action they have is against you via crime bill. I don't know how all, how all our elders voted for Biden when they know how detrimental that was. You get what I'm saying? Trump repealed that. Thank God. Uh, you feel me? Um, the, the fact of the matter is, is that we have all these red flags up every time we try to open up businesses in our community. You get what I'm saying? Those are all democratic policies. Democratic policy is against us. Now, I'm not gonna say that every person that is a Democrat is against us when it comes to our own people. What I'm saying is, is that y'all have been manipulated to believe that you're fighting with the party for us, and it's actually been the party that against us. And all you gotta do is just pay attention to our neighborhoods over the past five decades. Uh, ownership of the community has went drastically down as far as business go and home ownership go in the community. Um, our schools is shit. Our kids are being passed through, especially in Chicago, in the state of Illinois. They're passing these kids to the next grade and with all due respect, the kid is stupid than a motherfucker. I'm, I'm sorry, Miss, Sister Bethi. The kid is not up to par to move to the next level, but instead of holding them back and giving the extra resources to make sure they catch up, they just pass them along kicking the buck on, and by the time they graduate, you wondering why you got these kids? you wondering why you got these kids coming out of high school with no life skills, no direction. They can, they don't even know how to read and write in cursive no more.
Yeah.
So, so, so the time for us to been stop giving our allegiance to them has passed damn near thirty years ago. So we've been overdue for this. Uh, and I just wanna state that, you know, if anything, that the senator heard that, you know, uh, you might wanna speak on anything, you know, I, I'm, I'm more than, they're happy to, to hear your thoughts about it, and once again, appreciate you for coming on Sister Bethie Show to take these uh, questions and listen to our statements. Thank you.
Yeah, listen, I, 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 I respect people's opinion, man. Listen to me. Like I said, I've been involved a long time. And the first thing I did when we got the stimulus money, I put it in the hands of community people that did the work. We must have put in over three hundred and fifty million, I think, maybe a little bit more than that. I made sure that the people that were doing the work on the ground, the ground they got the majority of that money. The ones that had nonprofits for after-school programs and for mentors programs. We made sure of that. We took another three hundred and fifty, close to two million, four million dollars. We put it in the hands of small businesses, so they can fix their businesses up, expand their business. Never been done in the history of our state, or in my city. I got on the council in twenty seventeen. First ordinance I passed that any jobs that come in from developers and the city, that five percent of those jobs, twenty-five percent went to residents, the other five to ten percent went to ex-felons walking out of prison. Because I recognize we have a responsibility that everybody should be treated fair. And today, they're working for the city of Bridgeport. Those are the kind of things that take leadership. There's a lot of Democrats fighting their war. But I, I carry a little weight, and we gotta pass through. So, I, I, I respect people's opinions. I think this, this sister here I've known for a long time. And um,
Two years old.
I've gotta get to a council meeting, but I promise you this. This will not be the last time I come on your show.
Oh, good, we didn't run you away, but that's the, that's the hope.
I respect people. Listen, you have a right to feel the way you wanna feel. That's your opinion, that's your right. But I don't get upset, I don't take nothing personal, because I've been in the game too long to do those kind of things.
Is that what it is again?
You know me, sis, you know me. On the street, say, we ain't squared. I'm from the hood, baby. But I wanna thank you all. I gotta get to a council meeting.
Okay.
But I wanna thank you all for sharing your opinions and how you feel. Uh, because a lot of what you said is, is accurate. You know, like they said, they written us a, a check, a mad check, insufficient funds. I understand what you're saying, and I, you know, it's a struggle that I fight with them all the time. Only time you come around is when we need our vote. After we give you our vote, then we don't hear none from you. So I understand what you're saying. So I want to, um, you know, let you know I will come on any other time you want me to.
Yep, so if you subscribe to my channel.
I'll start tuning in.
Yeah, subscribe to the channel, and you know, anytime you wanna come up on the piano and share something, you're always welcome. And I, like I said, I really appreciate you even taking the time. A lot of senators and representatives um, run. And I would hope that this segment would say, you know, it wasn't so bad. Um, I will visit the channel. I hope to get more, and I'm gonna work on getting more senators and representatives and councilmen and councilwomen to come and speak on our lives, because it's what we need. We're digital now, you know? They can be in the privacy of their own homes, you know, and, you know, we're not here to, you know, uh, 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 humiliate, and we just wanna ask questions that we normally really don't get to ask. That's our.
Well, I didn't get this gray hair for nothing, so that let you know I've been around, and I've heard a lot of things. So, I really appreciate you, men and gentlemen, ladies, for telling how you feel, and I respect that. You didn't sugarcoat it. This is how you feel. And um, that's what makes America so great, that we can disagree without being disagreeable.
Right, we can agree to disagree.
Right, I know, you know, I respect y'all.
But at least it gives them things from our real, you know, points, and I know a lot of thousands of senators are watching us and representatives. They always watch my channel, cuz I'm streamed to Twitter. So, at least it gives them a, you know, our true perspective. You know, cuz we never had. And, and they listen and they get it, and how I know that many senators and representatives are listening is because of what they implement in law. They're working on it, like education. They need to forgive all education loans, because education has been horrible. It's been horrible to our people.
Yeah.
But um, anyway, I know you have to go. We're gonna continue the conversation on the panel.
Well, I enjoyed you all, and um, grace and peace to all of you all. And I say, we say this in Mount Airy Baptist Church. Namaste. Namaste means that the divinity in me will always salute the divinity in you. God bless you all and have a good evening.
Same to you. All right.
Hey, I have one more question on these guys. I ran all the way out the boundary.
Man, I wanted to let him hear something real quick. You got out.
Uh, is he still there?
He gotta go.
No, he gotta go. Okay.
He gotta go. Hey, you stayed with us for two hours. I mean, I mean, and I know you'll be back. I know you'll be back.
We appreciate your time.
I promise you I will be back, okay?
Yep, you just hit the button that says leave. Okay, he got it. Well, that was really great, but we can continue the conversation, because senators, yeah, senators and representatives, I'm telling you now, they're watching, and they will, they're, they're listening to us. And don't be surprised if one of them really hit the link and come up here, because I'm really starting to open up and invite senators and representatives. It doesn't matter what state they're from. They're welcome here, so I wanna keep the conversation going. Hey, one might dip in. One might step in. We don't care about race, what race you are as a senator. I don't care if you're a monkey. You can, you're welcome to the panel. If you identify as monkey, we don't care. Oh, okay, so we got Cosmo.
Real quick.
You go right ahead, babe. I'll be right back. Y'all can hold it down for me. Hold it down, y'all, Truth, y'all.
Like, share, subscribe.
I wanted to ask him, did he uh, what did he voted to house them illegal immigrants?
Man.
That's the question I have. I was in the mountains, cuz I ain't gonna lie, I was listening and chilling up there. I had to hurry up and get up out of there, cuz I knew my signal was gonna be in and out.
That's crazy. That's the question I was coming up.
Yeah, I wanted to ask some policy agreements too, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Real quick when y'all finished, though, let me know.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Nah, I just wanna say, I'm be quite, I'm just glad that he was uh, well, I wouldn't say glad, I'm just uh, you know, I appreciate him being honest about the fact, when I bought up about the fact that these rotten buildings in our neighborhood, uh, that there are ordinance in every city that states that, you know, when they come like that, if they don't uh, keep the upkeep up, by default, they supposed to be taken in intimate domain, and it's a lot of these buildings that's not being taken that way, and it's being done deliberately to bring down the property value, uh, which jobs leave the region, finances leave the region, and this be the, the foundation that be laid down to let gentrification be able to come in much more easier. You know, you see a person come in in your community that's not one of y'all, and you know, they fix up this ragly house and get it all nice. Well, you gotta understand, it didn't really cost them that much money, and on top of that, they was willing to give them the finances to do it, but they won't give it to you.
And, and, and you know what, True? Uh, that's going on up here in Detroit, been going on.
Oh, yeah.
Gentrification, and um, and what we, what we was ending up finding out is that many of these rundown buildings was only, was only owned, like all throughout the city, may have been owned by three people. They own mass conglomerates and stuff that they're just letting run down. You know what I mean?
The crazy part is, is that they got a lot of our people inadvertently to help them with it, and they didn't know it. I'm gonna tell you how, right? Notice, how many y'all know brothers and sisters that out the blue, man? They get to buy properties and flipping properties, right? Y'all seen that, right? But when nobody telling them to buy the property, keep the property. Get what I'm saying? Fix up the property and keep it up in the neighborhood, like nah, they was, they was buying them and flipping them, which was basically uh, independent contract salesman for the city to help sell these properties to people for them, because they was just looking for a quick flip and shit, but wanna understand the importance of, ay, man, getting that property that low and fixing it up and keeping it, and maybe renting it out or staying in it, because you see what's going on. So these guys be running plays, and all they know they gotta do is just, you know, man, flash a price tag, and, and you won't even really dig too deep in it to understand what play they really running on you and stuff like that.
Exactly, and then a lot of times it be big money trust that uh, through wheelers who turn around and buy the land right, or the house right back from you. Now, you, let's just say you bought this land grant house, uh, and, and it costs you a thousand dollars, but you know it's gonna take about another fifteen grand, twenty grand to get this thing up to code, living right, woo. Now you got this house for, that you just bought for eight hundred dollars. You dig what I'm talking about? And, and true, uh, or not true, but you know what I'm saying, I'm just saying. Let's just say Cosmo and whoever comes to you, and he buys you out on this twenty thousand or forty thousand dollar house that you just got for a thousand dollars. He turns around and tell you, look, I'll give you times and a half. I'll give you two and a half thousand for that house. Now, the money to put back into the backend uh, is, is no problem, but they were never gonna do that anyway. The whole thing was to let it sit and then wipe it and then sell these forty thousand dollar homes.
Mm-hmm, and the crazy.
Um, what do you call that? A monopoly?
Yeah, the crazy part about it though, Cosmo, this, this the real game right here. If you really thirsty for money, and you done fixed up this cheap house and made it look nice, which mean they got equity in it now. Nigga, nigga take some of the equity out and put in your pocket and pay it back.
They don't understand, Truth, they, they rather uh, do um, UCC ones and threes and all type of crazy shit and get caught up in some dumb shit than to put a fence around your shit in a garden and just live in it. You dig what I'm talking about? Turn, turn that, and then in Detroit, when you buy these houses, if you got a lot next to you, you can just fence the lot in, right? And it's yours.
Yeah, my homie just did that uh, on fifth, on uh, on Eighteenth and Hard. You know, it's a, it's a big y'all, it's a, it's a open lot right next to his house that they been cleaning up for twenty years, cooking on it, throwing family events, block parties, all types of things. This where we all be hanging out and then everything. And I was the one that put him up on game. I was like, eh, cuz it come find out, I'm like, damn, y'all don't own this right here. Like, nah, I was like, hey, look, bro, we all know who the alderman is, cuz he's one of the guy's aunties and shit.
Right.
Like, ay, go holler at her and tell her about this right here, and ask her, what can you do to implement some steps to take over in it with the information that I gave him, which I told, I was like, look, this is just information about it. They gonna know exactly what to do. Go holler at her about it, and sure enough, bro, she put him right on the right path with the right paperwork and who to run it to and everything, and now they own that lot. Yeah, they own the lot now for free.
Yeah, and see, and that's what's going on. The thing is, if you, all you got to do in Detroit is fence the lot in, and, and the lot is added to what is called a plat. Your, your little section of land that's sectioned out for just that little square footage of your home, it's called a plat. Right? And, and you get the little lot next to it if you can fence it in. And, and then this the crazy part. They give you a four hundred dollar loan from Lowe's to buy the gate.
Oh, yeah, Home Depot give out the card, all that. Yeah, bro, I got a Home Depot card. You feel me?
But you know what? You know what, True? These boys laughed at me a couple years ago. They laughed at me, bro. Got, got a good giggle off me. They sick about it now, cuz when I was telling them, look, we got, this all this goddamn PPP loan money, let's buy all the houses on one block. These niggas laughed, that nigga, I gotta get these boss and blah, blah, blah. They, they did everything. These boys back broke.
Yeah, man, my pa- my, my partner out there in Detroit on the east side, bro, over there off uh, off Sixth and shit, bro, you know Angelo, that's what he did. He bought two properties on it, on his block.
That's what I did.
Yeah, you know, he fixed it up to where it was livable, start living in it, little by little, just start fixing it up type thing. You get what I'm saying? He ain't rich, he working nine to five doing that. He was the world, he make, he making like sixteen dollars an hour. And that's when they had, that's when they had the dollar homes going on out there.
But it's about motion. It's about having the ability to create these things, cuz, cuz other homie renting, probably renting that one out. You dig what I'm talking about? Uh, sublim- sublimating the, the bills on, on his home with that one. You dig what I'm talking about? And trying to pocket the little stuff that he get from his job. You gotta have two, three, four hustles these days. I don't know, I don't know how y'all grew up. But we, 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 it was, it was no play-play in Detroit. We went out and got it. We went, we, and this is why I always hate a thieving ass nigga. I never liked a thief. You dig what I'm talking about? Because when I seen True pull up on, on, uh, uh, squatting an old school caddy clean with the diamond in the back sunroof top, you know, digging the scene with the gangster lane, woo, woo, I didn't wanna kill him and take it. I wanted one. I wanted to know what Truth did to get that caddy, cuz I was about to go do the same thing. That's what, that's, that's that type of hustle that was instilled within me. You dig what I'm talking about? And these people up here in the, in these streets. Um, I never got that. I never got that energy, you know what I mean? Uh, wanna take something from somebody, and but, but I, I've always known that our people, the biggest problem for our people in um, I would ask uh, Chief Thunder, would she agree? I think our biggest problem is we don't love ourselves enough. We don't forgive ourselves enough. We don't help ourselves enough. I just think we done been through a doozy in this country. Stuff got put on us that's got it, got us even thinking we African. Many of us. You know what I mean?
I understand.
What, you know, that's some real mind. You know, the, the, you know, Vulcan mind meld type stuff. You, you know what I mean? This is MK Ultra type stuff.
Absolutely.
You know, this is, this is really what they call, uh, and then to find out, um, your own government, backed by the CIA, pushed through what is called COINTELPRO, but see, COINTELPRO don't stop with COINTELPRO. They had other programs up under it, like Black Book and Black Desk. Out of these same thought, thinking, or, or thinking tanks and think tanks and thought processes come out, uh, the King Rex Rules and, and Rex Eighty-Four. They done did a number on our people. They make the light skin hate the dark skin, and the dark skin hate the light, the fat hate the skinny, the tall hate the short. Either way, and then they got us to believe somehow dark meant evil. Or that it it dark meant bad or negative. Dark is unnecessary. There ain't no, there ain't no growth. If it's not in the dark, everything gestates and grows in the dark, everything.
And what black and white have in common is you can't see through either color. Don't get me started. Don't get me started. You can't see through either color. You can't see through a white grin. You can't see through something that's white and you can't see through something that's black. So I um guess this government has did a number on us. But it was by the assistant assistance of our own people. If you look back, if you look back in history, they left our own, that one thing the government did not do is take um the control of our people over us. Our people, if you really look at history, our people have always been in control over us. And we you really have to look at it to see it for what it is. Again, I say this, if we look back in history, white people never took control of our people over us. That's just not true. Look back in history and look who's been overseeing us. It has been our people the whole time. That's a hard pill to swallow, but it's the absolute truth.
Absolutely.
It is.
Absolutely.
Ain't that where you get your quote unquote talented tenth in your uh in your um um what do they call it? Your your bourgeoisie?
It was our people that came to us and said, convert or die. It wasn't the white guy. We need to stop putting that on us. Because when you go in our churches, who's our preachers?
No, but hold on. We we got goofy niggas out here who tell us talk like this is being on a pulpit or preaching. I think you a sucker. You did what I'm talking about because you don't
So we, you know, it 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 did say in their Bible that in the third and fourth generations, I'll revisit you. That's what I remember. So when you know better, you do better. At this point, we've all went through different dynamics in life with our family, friends, associates. Nobody's immune from going through horrible dynamics in life. And that's a fact now. Is it very noticeable that we are a targeted people? Yes, that's very clear. But only we can fix it. Only we can fix our real issues. Nobody is going to volunteer to fix it for us. We have to stand up and 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 begin the healing processes for ourselves. We can't keep feeling sorry for ourselves. But what we can do is begin to heal ourselves by working together. The first thing that was taken away from us is our families. Our families have been divided. That was our love, our families. The families, our families did everything together. Everything, if you really think about it. We don't do the things we used to do with our families. Uh every year, our family didn't miss. And we didn't make our gatherings as a family on a yearly basis. No. We were more commonly with our families and they were broken up because we loved each other so much. So now we gotta look back and backtrack and see what broke us up, what divided us, what really hurt us. So I I I land the plane there. I I land the plane. Y'all got it. Yeah, let 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 Copper Goddess go, Cosmo.
I know how you go, bro, because you're you're a scholar. I didn't mean to uh interrupt your wisdom. But I just, I wanted to sister Beth to hear this joyful noise from these little children in Chicago. I just saw this video and everybody else, okay? People in Chicago are not sleep. The people in Illinois are not sleep. Because they keep trying to hack, they keep trying to equate Obama with Illinois because they playing that same bull crap about him being black and Kamala being black, which both of the two are cosplayers. So here we go.
And why is that, man? Barack Obama done anything for around here?
And I'm glad he out.
Barack Obama? I ain't got no message to say on. I don't mess with Barack Obama. Nah, I'm a Trump supporter. Trump do more for black people and care more about black people. And Barack Obama ain't black. Just let that be known.
What about Kamala Harris?
I don't fuck with her either. I'll Trump, Trump all day.
What's your message to Donald Trump today?
Keep going, keep going. Come get us, man. We waiting on you.
I'm a Trump supporter, man. We gonna keep this going. Trump, he a real businessman. I'm a real Republican, man. I want Trump backing off for second term.
What would be your message to Barack Obama?
Well, pump some money in here. Pump pump some money like Trump, you know?
Your message to Donald Trump? Come on, man, get us to the Super Bowl, bro. Make America great, man. That's all I can say. Everyone's so friendly right here. Everyone's so friendly. I need chain game like this. Y'all got a deagle going home, man.
Yeah, I'm taking over Benny's show, man. This Odie, man. I'm a YouTuber, man. Y'all get happy, man. There ain't Trump over on this side of town. I ain't gonna lie to you. You can go hell well. You see how dry this motherfucker is? We need Trump, boy. Whatever it's gonna do to make this flow back, man. Get it up, let's get it going immediately, man. Benny, who you going for, Benny?
My president is making America great again. I love Chicago.
It's my lone lost twin, man. Seth Brady at birth, man.
Better tattoos, better style, better hair.
We both good looking though, man. That's all that count, man.
Better teeth, better ride. All right.
Man, they love us, y'all. Everybody loves us. We are the ones that they are emulating. Everybody wanna be like we, everybody.
We are the heartbeat, literally. Y'all, I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut nobody off. But to to be honest, we are the heartbeat. We are literally the drum line, y'all. We them ones. I don't give a damn what they say. You get mad at me, I don't give a fuck. I'm sorry. I got you, Sister Bethy, I got you. But I gotta be real. We are the drum line. We are the heartbeat of everything. And if you don't wanna just give us our flowers, then just get out the way. Because this train on a downhill, you don't wanna get in the way. I'm trying to, I'm I'm being nice, Sister Bethy. But I'm I'm saying this for real and I I didn't come up here for a long time just to say that we them ones. We are them ones. You don't have to like it, you don't have to agree. We don't give a dang on. We them ones. And I I'ma I'ma land right there, Sister Bethy.
Man, Copper Goddess, I appreciate the sentiment about Chicago that you gave. A lot of people don't know. All apart.
I'm from Danville.
Are you from Danville?
That's right. You know, my aunties and uh my cousins been in part of Cook County and police department for over thirty years. My auntie used to be the chief of uh police. I got big, big uh blood in Chicago. Illinois, my stomping grounds, I'm from Illinois. And uh I'm letting the people, my people in my little town, they ain't on that dumb crap. We ain't on that. Everybody talking about Trump. We about to get out of here. Start videotaping, small town.
But you know what, though? If you look at, if you look over history, right, at integral points in America dealing with our people, notice that, notice, notice the area where it was, where they try to suppress and drown out the most because they always been the most outspoken. That's all I'm gonna say, man. They know what, they know what time it is. That's why they trying to get all the motherfuck- uh all, excuse my language, all the migrants up there and everything. They know what it is. You feel me? With all due respect, man, you know, we we the heart, we the heart, we the heart of the country.
A lot of the greatest movements of all, period, come up out of these, come up out of this northern Midwest. You did what I'm talking about movement. This Detroit, especially the heart, Detroit and uh Chicago are 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 brothers and sisters. You did what I'm talking about. That's that's that's
The whole Midwest, bro. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, a lot of the greatest movements, period.
You see how they try to play on our people and have the DNC in Chicago and bring Obama back and
Did y'all see the one that?
People in Chicago was gonna tear it up and and uh tear it up and act a donkey, but in reality, it's all that protesting and all them immigrants tearing it up up there.
And nah, speaking of immigrants and DNC, Sister Beth, you, can you uh share something for me, a TikTok video?
Yeah, where where is it?
Nah, I'm finna go get it right now. I think everybody need to see this. This was the funniest thing to me. I seen it this morning. Hold on, let me go grab.
Okay, why are you getting that? Let let me shout out to Smoke and everybody in the chat for joining us. And I also wanna say, Smoke Signal, I I I don't know what you talking about, Smoke Signal. You hit that link and come and get the thunder. I don't know who you think you talking to.
Okay, y'all got it.
And talk that joke to me, Smoke Signal. I kick his butt. I did.
Sound call, we them ones, uh, what's your name? We them ones, boy.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, y'all.
I'm waiting for it to um. Hang on. All right, I'm gonna share it now. Okay, here we go, y'all. This is from one 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 true.
Yeah, I approve this message.
Fair use.
National Convention at United Center. The Democrats, of course, want open borders and want an endless stream of illegal migrants pouring into the United States. This is my new acquaintance, Edwin. Say hello. Okay, Edwin is from Venezuela and we're gonna take Edwin into the DNC so that he can meet the Democrats who want open borders. Should meet his new friends, hear his speakers and learn about the Democratic Party. So Edwin, let's let's head in, shall we?
Fair use.
This is Edwin from Venezuela, uh migrant invited into the Democrat Party. He'd like to come into the Democratic.
Yep, you have to go to Jackson.
Wait, you mean he needs credentials and permission to come in to get past the wall? Like a border wall away, huh?
You have to have ID, credentials.
To come into the United States? Not to come to the United States, okay, but to come to the Democratic. Okay, you believe in in security. You believe in securing the boundary. Edwin, Edwin can't come in. That's all I know. I I commend you on 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 guarding the border. You're doing it very effectively, folks. Uh, we would like to get some credentials for Edwin. Come on, Edwin. Uh, Edwin is from Venezuela. So we tried to get Edwin into the convention, uh, he's a migrant from Venezuela. An organ, just American. And uh he's a migrant from Venezuela, wanted to get to the convention. They would love to have a migrant from Venezuela come in. They said we need credentials, so we're here to get the credentials. So you have to, there's a process in the application. He didn't have that at the border. Uh, just to be clear, we have been ejected uh from the DNC credentialing office because we're not permitted to be here. We don't have permission. We didn't go through the application process. Seems like the United States would use similar rules about crossing the US border. DNC doesn't believe in that, but they do believe in it for their own convention. Democratic uh party wants an endless stream of migrants into America, so I'd like him to go and meet his political friends, uh, listen to the speeches and come into Democratic convention. While you're laughing, he's allowed to come to the United States without identification or permission. Can he come into the DNC?
I don't think the secret's there.
They're not gonna go for it? Well, they went for it at the border.
This shit ain't home.
We'd like to get Edwin in, uh, Democratic Party invited him into America from Venezuela. We'd like to get Edwin in to meet his Democratic friends. You need credentials to go to the United States? Do you need credentials to go to the United States? So we do need credentials here to get past this heavily armed barrier. Well, Edwin, Kamala Harris has an open border. You're allowed in America. You're not allowed into her party. Oh, well, Edwin, we tried. Two gates, credentials. Oh, for three, that's a strike out of V S P O C.
A hot mess. That's a hot mess. That's a hot mess. That was something else. Oh, shout out from Alaska to y'all, everybody up in here. We got Alaska up here in the house. Hey.
I just wanna uh say, was you about to say something, sis?
No, no, you got it, baby. Go ahead, sis.
Girl, I just, uh, because I didn't watch the DNC. I didn't wanna watch it live because I know how that spirit thing goes and all that vibrations was horrible. But I'm watching snippets and stuff. And do you know that the Obamas was talking about, of course, the gender stuff? And Obama made some uh joke about Trump's penis and um uh Michelle Obama got up on the stage and told the world, if they didn't already know, that she doesn't have any biological children either. She's an I B F mother. Michael and I. And uh I knew that a long time ago. Like when he was in office, I knew that. That's how long I've been on this tr- uh train trying to see what's happening with this government. But um now she's coming out and this is all a part of their agenda. That's why they kept pushing all this gender affirming and L G B T P T, whatever you say it. And um all of those weirdo laws that were passed. The Obama set that right on up because they thought the reveal to the world was really, really hanging low up in this piece.
Okay, let's just keep it clean. So until she makes any announcement.
I thought that was horrible that she got up on the stage and talked about that, but I see what they doing. They easing it on in.
Well, she did, she did write the book on trans rights. If you look it up, she wrote a book uh about trans rights. And uh, yeah, and Obama, it's not disrespectful when we say that
What's an IVF mother?
In vitro fertilization.
Oh, thank you, my bad. I feel stupid now.
Put the, put somebody sperm inside your supposed vessel.
Yeah, the uh the kids, the daughters, uh, you know, it's some information flinging around the internet showing their real names and that they didn't come from, you know, those people, that they were actually adopted. You know, even though they do look like uh those people in a way. But Obama mistakenly called her Michael before, you know? And you know, she was mistakenly called Michael by other people too. But let me just say this real quick, right? Trump, it's no disrespect to these people, right? But I I'm I'm gonna just keep it a G. Like, y'all gotta know, these are, these, sometimes people are plants, man. It just is what it is. You know what I'm saying? Yes, people did a little bit better underneath his term than they did underneath Biden term. That's a fact. Right? But he he went against the jab, right? And then turned around and promoted it and then signed a bill to release it. And Candace almost called him, called him out for that.
Okay, but let me, let me speak on that. But go ahead, go ahead. Finish, finish.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So
Turn your camera on. I wanna make sure who you are. I don't wanna get porn bombed. You're in the back. Nobody can see you but me. Go ahead, Jersey.
I look at everything.
Okay, honey, got you. Okay, honey, got you.
I look at everything as this crazy old playbook, right? Because he promoted the the J Squad, he defended them too. Trump did. I'm I'm looking at all of this stuff. So when I saw, when I heard the people in Chicago saying, oh, yeah, Trump, we for Trump, we for Trump, we Trump. I I felt kinda heartbroken a little bit. I'm glad that they wanted better for themselves and that they was waking up to who the, you know, who the uh, the bigger, uh, I guess bigger evil is, which would be the Democrats, the people, but to me, they're both the same. I've seen way too much stuff. The Democrats wanna promote uh abortion, right? If I go and kill, if I go ahead unalive a woman that's pregnant, right? I I get, I catch a double homicide, which means that she carried two lives, right? That that means that they can't say that abortion is not a life and then try to promote it, right? I I'm jumping everywhere with this cuz I feel like I'm about to get cut off. However, look, man, I I I just want everybody to know that it's it's still, it's still one bird. It's it's not just, it's not, it's not Republican good, Democrat bad. This guy good, this guy bad. This person, it's all the same thing. They still, they still part inside the same place. They still shake hands behind closed doors. This is, this is nothing different.
Okay.
I I I relinquish it right there. You got it.
Hang on one second, Copper. Hang, hang on one second, sweetheart, because there's six people up on the piano, then I'm gonna let y'all have it. I understand what you're saying, Jersey, and we can certainly all agree to disagree. And I think the reason why I'm so hard on getting Trump in office, it's, it first of all, it's personal. For first, for starters, cuz it's my personal choice. You know, you know what I'm saying. It's personal in my heart. And secondly, um, I'm doing it because number one, I do like Trump as a personal person, individual. He's business minded. And I guess, I I I think because of everything I went through with the Democrats. Because when I tell you that I was a hardcore loyal Democrat, I lost so much sleep. I I I've even, I I couldn't begin to tell you, all in sleepless nights, working and campaigning. And I put my soul, I think I put everything I had in me until I had to go to the hospital. I worked so hard for them and to wake up and smell the coffee finally. I I I've been so damaged by them, by them. And I think I I just truly want our Republicans, because for so many years, I've been brainwashed and controlled to not vote for him at all, at all. And I began having a lot of conversations with Republicans on a personal note. And they want the same things as us. They do. They promote businesses. They promote getting your own business. They do real hardcore on that. And they respect you more when you are owner of your own business, Republicans do. So that's like really personal for me. But I mean, everybody has their own, you know, personal feelings about both parties. And I get that. Independents, we leave out a lot too. But this just for me, you know, if anybody ever asks me, um, who you voting for, I'm gonna tell them the truth. Well, I'm voting for Trump. Until Ernie sees his pain, he's, I asked him that question. Are you, do you feel you're indoctrinated? He knows he's indoctrinated. He can't say it. That man knows the pain that the Democrats have caused. He knows. He's not stupid. That is one thing. Ernest Newton is not as stupid. I mean, they destroyed him, the Democrats, put him in prison for five years for taking the $5,000 kickback. He gave up his career for $5,000. And the Democrats put his ass in prison for five years. He came out and he got a position where he now rests until he retire as pro temp president, um, city council. And they do love Ernest in our state, Bridgeport, just just they, I was, the, the town I was born in, Bridgeport, Connecticut. They do love Ernie cuz he did do a lot and he did truly start off as a very young man in politics. So to that end, I just don't, at this point, I really don't. Nobody can convince me not to vote for Trump. I'm gonna vote for him. So that's just me. And I've persuaded a lot, thousands of other people to vote for him. And they get it and they understand. There's just many people that I'm not going to be able to convince. But I can say this, and then I, y'all got it from here. If Trump doesn't become the next president again, then America has really, really deceived us and let us down, truthfully. But y'all got it.
Okay, I was, uh, I wanted to piggyback on that. Anybody else wanted to say something before I say something? I don't wanna be rude.
Nah, go ahead.
Okay. Cuz I was like going back and forth with Trump versus Kamala, right? Cuz and first of all, that the vote don't count, don't vote and all of that stuff. I have to go on this other side of my brain and say, well, could that possibly be something that they've been telling us to deter us from voting? Because they know how how more, how value, how much value we have if we all voted for the same thing? Just a thought. I know, two, two wings, same bird, but that could be something that they using against us too. How can we trust anything, you know? Enough to beat the failure, but a try. So Trump versus Kamala. Trump's a family man and Kamala has no children of her own. She married a Jewish man and he already had teenage children. So she ain't nurtured shit. Um, Trump's a businessman and uh Kamala's the commissioner of the prison to pipeline, the school to prison pipeline. Anybody know that? Um, Trump is real talk. He don't beat around the bush. Uh, he say the same thing every time, policies, and he says his little smirky smart stuff, but so do they. They bash him constantly. That's all they always talk about. You would think that they don't, you know, you know they don't have no policies cuz that's all they do is bash Trump every time they talk. And then Trump only made $4,000 being the president, a dollar a year, so he did a pro bono presidency. Um, he's uh not cosplaying. He's being a white man like he is. She's being a black woman, an Indian woman, a Jamaican woman, uh, and a liar. He um. He is trying to change the curriculum of the education to be something that is positive for our children, which is taking out all of this sexual oriented studies in grade school, middle school and high school. He wanna change the education to something uh that's not related to sex. So I I definitely think that about him. So I was just doing some comparisons of myself with what's going on with them, you know, him versus them. That's all.
My, my thing is this. I'll be, uh, first of all, let me just go ahead and put it out there. I don't have a.
Yeah, let's be careful how we use words too, okay, you guys?
Correct, correct. I uh, I just wanna.
Hey, you know what's crazy though? The very thing that everybody loved about Trump when he's having little TV shows, how he talk, how he carry himself, is the very thing that you use it now to demonize me and stuff. So that's just kinda crazy to me.
And then let's turn it the other way, truth. Remember where we was four years ago? Everybody was saying, hating on Trump, trying to get Biden in the office. Now they hating on Biden and Kamala, trying to get Trump back. You did, it it's just odd.
I never, I I I never wanted him to go. I wanted him, I knew, oh, wow, the brother left off. You could come back on and I'll let you speak. You did not get a chance. Uh, we, you could come, come back on. I'll let you back on, brother. I know you got frustrated. What was his name again? Um. Yeah, come back on, Copper Roots. I'll let you back on. Yeah.
I figured there's no truth. That's why you had, you had cut him off without even knowing. I wouldn't have stopped.
I didn't cut nobody off.
Yeah, you did.
You didn't do it knowingly. You didn't do it knowingly. And then you, you just came in and.
Yeah, Copper Roots, if you're still out there.
I ain't even hear nobody. If I did cut him off, that was accident. I ain't hear.
You probably got a delay. You probably got a delay. Copper Roots, if you're out there, come back up, honey. I I never wanted Trump to leave office. I didn't. I was so hurt when that man lost.
Let me ask you something, Sister Beth, cuz you, you sound like you done been through something with these Democrats. Uh, is there, is somebody, what, what would they have to give Sister Beth? I'm just asking. What would they have to give Sister Beth to have you come back over there and uh vote Democrat again?
They can't give me nothing. They can't give me nothing. Um, I I've really, really am bruised by that party. Now, if they said, we'll give you a million dollars or two million if you would stop um lecturing about not voting Democrat, I'll take it. Because um.
That'll be the only thing good a Democrat did for you.
Um, yeah, um, because I'm in many places. I I'm like their Bible says, I'm everywhere. So you could stop me physically, I I'll take it. Give me the money cuz I know it's gonna take care of me. But they just have to remember that I'm everywhere. That's what I tell the Democrats. That's how dangerous it is. I'm everywhere. So it's not, I'm gonna stop physically because you're giving me the money, but they have to remember.
What if they say, what if they say proper uh recognition for the Negro in America as the Aboriginal Indian, and they say they give you the beginnings? Let's just say uh certain things to trace your family, uh ways to trace your land and a small stipend on, on, on reparations with more to come later. Would you come back?
Trump already got that in order.
Yes, cuz then my harm would be healed. Uh, I mean, you're talking about apology and acknowledging me for who I am and then taking um repairing all the pain you did to me.
Right.
Okay, so guess what? Either party could do that for me. Either party could do that to me, can heal those wounds. So it is what it is. I'm being honest cuz I be a fool, I'll be a lying ass if I sat up here and lied and say that I would not accept that.
Right.
I be fooling my.
I think y'all, hey, listen, for all y'all that's gonna vote for Trump and personally, none of that shit affect me. I I don't care who the president is. It don't, it don't matter to me at all. Ain't gonna change my life one bit.
Why don't you, that's not true. The president we just had let everybody get the bio weapon. That's not true. What is not true?
I don't vote, brother.
Listen, listen, listen to what I said. I said that didn't affect me personally.
Well, me either, but I know family members, plenty of them that it did.
Okay, but.
What, what, what do you mean, what didn't affect you, um, Cosmo?
Didn't shit affect me. Who the president was doesn't affect me. It doesn't change my bottom line either way. My thing is, I was, I was just saying, I hope y'all, for whoever y'all vote for, cuz I I just vote locally. I know my local people. Shout out Hill Harper, shout out Bobby Christensen. I actually know uh the uh the couns- the city councilman in my city. I I know these people. You did what I'm talking about. So this is how we get new parks and new shit all the way up here, a new uh, a new uh, 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 center for the city and all that stuff. This is how you get that done. You gotta press them people. So my thing is simply this. Whoever y'all voting for, I hope y'all hold they feet to the fucking, excuse me, to the fire. Get something out of the vote. Don't just emotionally tie. Get something out of it.
Y'all remind me, I'll go live and kick his butt cuz I am seriously gonna kick his butt. Real. Smoke Signal, I'ma kick his butt. He in there trolling. I'ma get him. But anyway, at least I can say this about Trump. When he was in office, everything he said he was gonna do, he did. And that's not a lie. That's a fact. He did.
He did.
Uh, that's not a lie. It's, it's a fact.
And he didn't say, I'm not gonna.
Maybe, maybe, and and what if it is, they're, both parties are playing us. What if that is true?
It is true.
Okay, okay, but at this point, I don't see it. I I don't see it. And I, I'm doing this because I convinced myself to do it and no one else did. And 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 you asked me a question if I was really hurt by this party. I was terribly.
Me too.
Ter- terribly, um, especially in my profession, Cosmo. I have three master's degrees, literally. Literally. And I've been overseen in a, a, in a government that I put my life into. I'm forty years in government. Come on. So if that's not pain, I don't know what you call it. And the same promises, I was severely indoctrinated. I believed in the Democratic Party until, until I had to wake up and smell the fucking coffee and learn that these people hate my soul. And that's a fact, and that, and that's okay. I'm at peace. I had to make peace within myself.
If you can admit that you.
I admit it.
Are light years ahead of most people.
I I admit it and, you know, I healed myself. I healed myself from all their pain. They can't do, they can't do no more pain to me cuz whatever's done to me is already done to them. And I, and I stand on that. I don't bother them no more. I don't look for promotions. I don't. I I gave up. I put the sword down and I now can sit back and wait for them to fail because they are failures. They're not winners in nothing, as far as I'm concerned. And that pain is that deep. But I think people are beginning to wake up to the Democratic rhetoric. They are waking up and it's showing. I've never seen in history so many of our people drop from the Democratic Party and say, we're going for Trump. They didn't even care. They just said, we're going for Trump. They gave no real explanations. But they're just left the Democratic Party in droves. We lost a lot of sleep fighting for Democratic rulership. And, you know, our health was our punishment. So I'm healing myself from that pain.
That's right.
That, that, I, 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 I relinquished my, you guys got it.
Hey, hey, Cosmo, I'm about to get into a little, a little message real quick, but before I get into, let me ask you a question. At any point in time, did you put on a mask uh during Trump's or Biden's terms? I did. Right, there you go. There you go. There you go, Copper Goddess. Because. That affected me? Well, yes, it did affect you because when you put on a certain, okay, especially depending on the mask. You were depriving yourself of oxygen. You were made to do something that you would not normally do. And, and, you know, it was violating your laws. It was violating your life, right? And it put you at risk to even catch the, catch the flu, right, which they wanna call it something else. So that affected your life cuz you, you was adhering to certain things that you wouldn't normally do. So that affected your life. And they had, they put us on so-called shutdowns. If you left, they put us on curfews. Yeah, I, I, I feel you, but we ain't kinda, we ain't even go for that shutdown shit in Detroit. None of that, none of that affected us, bro. We was out in the streets, none, nigga, I know what they said happened, but that ain't what happened. And and um, uh, uh, as in for the inconvenience of me having to go into a store or, you know, to go get tissue papers. It is an inconvenience, but it didn't affect me. You did what I'm talking about. I I I wasn't worried about, I didn't get sick, neither, neither did none of my family. You did what I'm. You dig what I'm talking about? We didn't get sick. So.
I did, supposedly.
I didn't.
Well.
I didn't.
Let me tell you.
Crazy part is, um, I knew it was something funny with this. When the most exposed people who should be having the disease didn't catch it. Did none of the bums or nobody who was.
That's how I knew it was fake.
None of them caught it.
Well, let me, let me say this, this shit is funny because I, you know, first of all, I was not wearing no goddamn mask for nobody because I said, uh, I smoke.
Nope, nope.
I smoke cigarettes. How the fuck I'mma wear a mask? Y'all want me to die.
Sister Bethy, Sister Bethy cursing.
Oh, 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 yeah, that's right. Forgive me, y'all. Sorry. But um, let me tell you what happened. Oh, and Copper, you mentioned something about, somebody mentioned something about Trump with the um whole um implementation of the V. First, when he caught it, he did this shit smooth and Willie caught it and then explained it to me. And I didn't catch it. I had to keep rewinding it and watch it. When they said Trump had the uh the the boo-boo, I call it the boo-boo. He went in the hospital for three days and he said, I'll be back to them and see y'all. It was three days later. He said, I'm back to work. And I was like, well, I'll be damned. That was the smoothest way in the world to tell the world what to take to get rid of this shit.
And they banned.
And I, and then, yeah, but I thought that shit was smooth as hell. Willie caught, he catch every damn thing because that's the Mr. Political Man. And I said, well, I'll be goddamn. Go ahead, Trump, with your badass. So I um long story, I wanted to um put that out there so y'all can say what you want to say about Trump. But he walked out that bitch in three days. He said, I'm just like Jesus. I rose on the third day. He walked out. And then he, and then he um left. And he was fine, but I had went to the um um walk-in clinic. And, you know, I went in and they gave me the little nose swab to test me. Because at that time, we had to take. No, I wasn't sick. That's the thing.
The thing, it got you sick, the swab.
No, that didn't either.
Oh, it had all kinds of nanobots on it.
No, he he hear me out, hear me out. So they swabbed, the girl swabbed me. And so I went in, after she swabbed me, they took the test and whatever. And the doctor came back in the room and he said, let me tell you something. I said, okay. He said, you have bronchitis. I'm giving you this. You have bronchitis. I knew I had bronchitis because I get it every year. All right? And so then that night, I he said, I'm telling you this. And I'm giving you this medicine to cure your bronchitis, Miss Gals. I said, okay, because I thought that was quite normal. He was right. So then I get a call. I'm laying in the bed and I get a call at eight o'clock at night from the health department in my state. Hi, Miss Gals, how you feeling? I said, I'm fine. Who is this? They said, oh, this is the Center for Disease Control. I said, oh, hi. And and then she's like, you feeling okay? I said, yeah, I'm fine. I just came from the grocery store. She said, oh, your doctor didn't call you? I said, no, why? He, she said, you have the C. I said, well, I tell you what, everybody in Stop and Shop got it too. Because I, and she was starting laughing. She put herself on hold because I know she was laughing. I said, I went to the grocery store. I don't know what you talking about. I went to the grocery store. She said, well, uh uh I'm I'm giving you instructions. You have to quarantine. You gotta quarantine for five days, right? Quarantine. Wait a minute, no, at that time, it was ten days. She said, you gotta quarantine for ten days. I was like, what? And she said, everybody in the house cannot come out. And I'm on the phone, Willie laying in the bed. I said, Willie, these people saying I got COVID. And he was like, he started laughing. I said, I don't know what you laughing. Your ass can't go out. The lady on the phone said, you can't go out the door. So at that time, you know, the the our our state was giving us the money, paying us, you know, if we caught that. So I called my job and told them and they was like, oh, okay, thanks for letting us know. So I had to quarantine for ten days. It was a shit wrong with me. I was pissed. I was so pissed, so pissed.
And and then I remember.
I just stayed in my house for ten days. I couldn't go nowhere. And me being in constitutional state, right? I'm thinking somebody from my job is gonna be watching me if I step out the house or the police. I was so scared. YouTube scared the shit out of me when it came to that. And I'm still not feeling nothing. The medicine kicked in and I um I did, I had bronchitis. I started feeling better. And um so I was pissed for having to stay in the house for ten damn days.
Do you remember when it was um, when they were giving people fifty dollar gift cards to take to jazz?
And donuts.
Wait, wait, yeah. They would give it away, they would give it away free weed, free condoms, movie tickets. They would, they would give away Popeye Popeye's chicken sandwiches. They was giving away, they was giving away, hold, they sent free passes to certain strip club nights, right?
I remember that. That's right.
Yeah, yeah, and yeah, and then and then it got the nerve to say at the end of the day, no voting, no bucking. Bucking, V V V with a V, no voting, no bucking, right? And it's like, that, the disrespect, the level of disrespect that they have for us is ridiculous. They all think we weed smoking, liquor drinking, twerking, uh, me sl- like, they think we the just the most degenerate people in the world. And and then they say, hey, listen, I know you so, I know you like all of this. If you vote for me, you gonna have more of this and we all gonna be happy, y'all.
And then, and then, hold on, hold on, hold on, Lightman. He started off his whole presidency degrading. He said, if you don't vote for me.
For me, you ain't. I know the Abbo community was like, we 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 wasn't gonna vote for you. We don't think we black already. So Bill, Bill Clinton was known as the first black president because he smoked weed and drunk and drunk a forty or something like that, right?
Played the saxophone.
Yeah, and then played the saxophone. This, this the pandering that, this the level of pandering that they go through to disrespect us and mock us. And we still got the nerve to vote for us because the Black Caucus, the aristocracy, and all of these so-called leaders that that we've been looking up to, some of our parents too, or uncles and aunts, right? And see, when we, yeah, when we talk about, when we talk about, we 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 gotta save ourselves, we damn sure, uh, away from some of our own families and these other motherfuckers, these other people, excuse me. So the thing about the Republicans and the Democrats, right? If you know, if you notice the pattern, the Republicans, we get an international attack, right? When uh when Ronald Reagan was in office, we got hit with the with the crack and the coke and all that other stuff, right?
Yeah.
And but, and then we get hit with the Sumo the War, the nine elevens and stuff with George Bush, that's Republican, right?
And don't forget the Contras, don't forget all the Contras.
Yeah, 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 facts. And then with the Dems in office, we get the national attack, the inside, the inside suffer, right? The the terrorism, the 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 riots, the wars, the BLMs, the Antifas, we get all that crap, right? Like, this the thing, if people want to elect uh Kamala, they could do something on Pearl because Kamala is led by her J-Squad husband, right? She, she's not led by a quote-unquote black man or or black woman if they think that, you know, she want to be the first president that has a woman uh uh wife or whatever, you know what I'm saying? And and then they really represent their community that they try to pander to. Because that's, that's what they think that we are. They all think, remember, BLM on their website said that uh black is queer. Right? And they were selling shirts. And if you hit that link, uh, Secure Act Blue, it, all the money that you would donate will go into the Democratic office. And they listed off the names of the Democratic office people that was going to, Obama was one of them, Hillary Clinton was one of them. Right? You were putting money inside their pockets and while they were in office, they didn't do nothing for you. You see what I'm saying? Now, now, that's the thing, right? Nobody black tries to convince uh everybody in the world that they're black. We don't, we don't convince everybody in the world who we are. If you not that, you gotta do that. So why everybody is trying to convince everybody that she's black? If she, if she was black, nobody, you wouldn't, you wouldn't even have to convince nobody.
You wouldn't have to convince.
Correct.
There you go.
So, 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 Trump, Trump's assassination, a news spread lasted way less than Will Smith slapping Chris Rock. Right? He, he was almost assassinated. Everybody was talking about it for a couple of days, but when, when Chris, when uh Will Smith slapped Chris Rock, everybody was talking about that for months.
Months.
Right? Months. Somebody almost died, right? You know, I I don't want to keep holding up the uh.
So who raised?
Right. Don't forget the Obama administration, and I don't know if y'all caught this, because I I I catch everything. When Obama became the first brown president, you seen Joe's ass. All right, he had to calm down all the white people. All right, all right, I know he's brown, but I'm here. I'm really the fucking president. This nigga ain't really running shit. I'm back here, old Joe, all right? So he gave all the white people comfort. Don't worry, don't worry, we know what we're doing here. I know he appears to be, but this is my shit. I'm running this. So if you think the Obama administration was really the Obama administration, that was the Biden administration the whole fucking time.
But I got something, Sister Bethy. Wait, I got.
I I I'm just keeping it a buck.
You, you got it, but I got, I got some, uh, wait, don't, don't forget, uh, the Medicare was a Republican bill that Obama enacted and evolved it into Obamacare. This is how we know it's one bird. Because there are certain bills that the Republicans in on, and the Democrats in that, and there are certain bills that the Democrats make that the Republicans at, right?
I can't fully, well, yes, Romney jersey, Romney started that many.
Rhino.
Somebody, yeah, uh, years ago, but by the time the Democrats got it, it was a complete fucking mess. When you look at it, when Romney actually implemented it for his particular state, it was okay.
What was it called? Romney Care?
Yeah, yeah, it was okay. But by the time it reached the Obama administration and in their implementation of it, it was horrible. Old senior citizens in Connecticut was going in. I felt so bad for them because they were deceived. They felt deceived. Oh, he must have hit a bad um bump, a bad spot. He'll be back. But um, yeah, I I went before our legislator to tell them, look, we got elderly people here complaining about this Obamacare. They can't afford it. Elderly people were divorcing their husbands of fifty and sixty years just so that they could qualify for certain Medicare, Medicaid benefits. They had to do it. They had to do it. Yeah, that's how bad it was. And I was like, oh, this shit gotta stop. They had to divorce their husbands so that each one of them could apply separately as though they'd never been married before. I was like, that's bad. That's bad. And see, I have a soft spot for the elderly.
Yes, girl, me too.
I I I, that's my community, the elderly. I mean, when you mess with elderly and elderly abuse, oh, no, 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 no.
Speaking of the elderly, elderly, remember when it first got started and we had our elderly that were in the homes? They immediately cut off their visits so their people couldn't come and see them. And then they put them on the ventilators in the hospital if they claimed they had that crap. And then they told them they couldn't have a funeral service for them.
Yeah, that was.
Couldn't even have a funeral service for your people, but here we are celebrating George Floyd painting streets and letting him have a service as if he was Martin Luther King and did something righteous for the people. And all he did was be the psyop to get everybody divided in this country.
How about when they was putting bricks and stuff in particular areas so that so that our people could loot and our people was the ones that wasn't looting because they was catching them on camera saying, yo, we, this not why we here. We want a peaceful protest. Why are you doing this? And the Black Lives, the Black Lives Matter
Yeah.
was saying, was doing this shit. And the black people was like, yo, yo, we don't want to loot. We don't, it's not what we want to do. And they was finding shit in different areas that's very, well, saying some black person's gonna pick this up and do this. Nope.
Yeah, they was putting uh bricks, just piles of bricks along the the wa- the way that they was going.
There you go. I couldn't think of their name. Crisis actors.
Crisis actors.
Yeah.
They were all foreigners too, y'all, because I was in Atlanta. I was running up on them and asking them to talk. They wouldn't talk because they, most of them wouldn't even speak in the dang own language.
It was obvious who they was, Copper, because they was walking around with them black, who the hell walks around with black umbrellas? Black umbrellas and they had backpacks on. So you know they had their guns. You know they had guns.
Blackface masks is hot as hell. You dig on, you got all this black on. Yeah, you stuck out like a sore thumb, but what you, what they did, see, that that camera is a two-way sword. You know what I mean? Because without that, because we see a lot of things we didn't see just ten years ago.
Yeah, you right.
Yeah.
We see a lot of things. You dig what I'm saying? So uh it's, it's working both ways. You know what I mean?
These last couple of months, though, are really critical, though. I know everybody is talking about the the bird with the wings and things like that. But we really have to think about the fact that when all of this stuff happened um four years ago, they were censoring the people that were trying to tell everybody what was going on. And now all of these things are coming into fruition. So now it's very difficult to even convince some of the people because they didn't get to see the footage when we was trying to share it. So now I noticed, since I've opened up some of my old phones with all that good stuff in there, I'm posting and it ain't getting taken down. No more fact checkers because they've been debunked. Found out that they was just a bunch of people that was just gonna deny the truthers, right? So now that everything is coming into fruition, our people's minds are open because they are seeing the bull out here. It's being shown. There's no way to get around it now. Even the mainstream media cannot hide the light of truth. So now it's even more important for us to drill into our people's heads about policy over personal. And me personally, I know that they say um the things about what they say about Trump. And when Trump was in in office the four years, there was no international warfare going on. All the international leaders was kissing his butt.
They were terrified of that man.
Yes, they were. He was crossing thresholds that nobody had crossed before. And they would not let us show these things at the beginning. Now these things are coming out and they are seen.
Yeah, and I, my biggest thing is, I do not want this woman to be president because I don't um, I I don't trust her communication with handling um foreign, foreign policy. I don't, I I don't care. I don't want her dealing with our foreign policy. Leave that to Trump.
Who she gonna do? Laugh at him? Laugh us at him?
I I I can't. We can't, we can't have her. I don't want her. I don't.
I can't believe women want her to represent us with her goofy self. She is so goofy.
And I'm keeping it a buck. I really liked uh Mike Pence. I did. I really like Mike Pence. If Trump wasn't to run for president again, I would have went and threatened Mike Pence and said, you better run. I'd have had on a little mask saying, Mr. Prince, if you don't run for president, Mike Prince, I'm, I'm gonna hold you hostage. I really like Mike Pence.
Mike Pence is very important to what's getting ready to happen with, in the next couple of months. Let me ask you this, uh, Sister Bethy, because I I'm reading some of Mama Chief's remarks about, you know, Trump don't have no tangibles for us either as a nation.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm not a dummy. I do realize that, but I'd like to say this. He does have like two executive orders that are in play right now. One is a, an executive order for American Indians and Native Americans to uh about uh child and human trafficking, which is getting a lot of these cases looked at and a lot of these traffickers caught. Another one is uh the one where he said that he was gonna seize all assets of these people who were convicted of these crimes. Now, we are starting to see financially, and these funds are supposed to go back into the, we the peoples, right? Okay, their assets are gonna get seized and the the seizure monies are supposed to be divided out into the the public, right? That's what he say.
That's what he say.
That's what he say, okay? An executive order out of nowhere and nobody knew back then what that was about, but I know we see what's happening now. Uh, lots of trafficking, uh uh governors, people all in politics getting popped off, right? But what I want to propose to him, because we need a guy or a girl. We need to ask him why he keeps specifying that Warren don't look like no Indian. And anybody else that say something about being Indian, he, and why Kennedy said it. I got plenty of videos on Kennedy saying it to Native Americans. Well, y'all don't look like the Indians that I know about, but okay. Okay, if, we need to propose these things, right? We need to lay down the law about how we didn't debunk all this history, bruh. We got the whole, we got everything. You can go back and look at all our Youtubes. Were we digging in this? We got the whole, we got everything, you can go back and look at all our Youtubes, where we digging in this dang on history about, y'all lied about our identity. What you gonna do about this American Indian status, bruh? We need to handle that ASAP.
What I'm saying, hold y'all president feet to the fire.
Enough of us really need to march up there like when they.
Sister Bethy, you already been there, and I was telling somebody about.
No, I mean, literally.
Yes, I know.
And, and the United Nations say, alright, damn it, we took the mask off, because the mask, we've been wearing the mask. Before this COVID shit, when they implemented us to wear masks, face masks. Since they listed us as black people on the goddamn census, we've been wearing the mask for years. And now we took, we took it off, we took it off, but we got to go and publicly show them, excuse me. We're not, we, we're not no damn African. We, but I think they know that now, that we know.
Oh, you gone?
But, but y'all gotta, I gotta go, go to the ladies room.
Um, wouldn't it be simpler? I mean, just for everybody, especially for everybody that's involved in the Aboriginal movement, to start our own lobbying movement.
That, can we start tonight?
That would, that would be simple, we can address who we, it wouldn't matter who got in the office.
Nope, yeah, it would.
Press our issue.
They would have to have policies that are good for us, but yeah, I understand.
No, no, we create the policy. Right, and, and, and then we got the pe- we, we pay, we do what they do, they slush fund them to death. We're gonna give our money and our votes to you, because you are gonna push this. And if you get this guy, tell this guy, he got, he got the nigga vote on this side, and if he get him with it. You, you dig what I'm saying, it's just about getting your claws into who you need to, to get what you need done. NRA does it, BlackRock does it, Vanguard, he, you know what I mean, all these companies, you dig what I'm saying, they. They pay for what they want. We, we understand that the politician is a crook. Right, he, that, his whole livelihood is to be shysty. So this is why, you know what I mean, when you see a politician getting, taking money or anything. He has been exposed on purpose, they set him up, because they all do it. They all do it, trust me, it, they just, they, if, um, if anybody, any of these brothers got exposed for. Bribery or anything, all that, they set that up. Trust me, it's guys walking into, uh, different lawyer, uh, firms every day with briefcases full of unmarked cash.
But isn't the difference, the fact that Trump was not a politician? And that he was a businessman, as soon as he got in there, he started doing business stuff and everything started working outright for the cu- um, country. Isn't that the, 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 the main objective here? All these other people we dealing with, they've been in politics for years and years and years. To his four years of scrutiny, cause we all forgot that, at first it was, uh, Russia, 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 then they. They found out that was a lie, but nobody cares. They, uh, put all the, you know, what was that, the? The files and stuff that he was supposed to have, the same kind of files that Biden had. But then they made a big deal out of him having the files, but not a big deal out of Biden having, having the files, and now at this present moment.
Do you remember when a part of them files got leaked? Do you remember that?
They dropped the files on Trump, but now Biden up the ma- up to bat now, because, uh. It's, it's the real reason why he got the files is because he been messing with other countries, Burisma, him and his son, remember his son's laptop was a lie?
Do you remember when some of them files got dropped? Part of it was in that Snowden thing, when, uh, when they exposed Benghazi?
Absolutely, yes, Benghazi, that's what, yes.
Yep, when they exposed Benghazi and, uh, what's her name, Hillary and what's the other little short nigga that ran for president? The one that said, yeah, uh, McCain.
McCain.
McCain, them, that whole little.
Yep, yes.
Dust up, or that whole little dust up and all them people dying over there, and them people having all the military weapons had something to do with McCain. Right, he, he set up the business to slush the guns over there.
I got pictures of him with them over there, I can't wait.
And then the crazy part is, they took all them weapons from Libya after killing, uh. Border, they crossed right across the border and became ISIL.
Yes, the swamp.
Yep, remember a bunch of that, a lot of, uh, some of that came out with, with the Snowden release. You dig what I'm talking about, but this is how Trump and them even knew, this is how they even knew that something had happened.
Yes, sir.
They wiped all that stuff, you can't find none of that. You can't find none of that.
Scrubbed it, and then, and then, how about Julian Assange? Remember he been in prison all this time? And now ironically, since it's election time, it's time for him to come out, cause they can read, let us read the WikiLeaks, if you haven't already read them, because they are publicly available.
Mama Chief, I'm, I don't think, I don't, I'm not go- I don't think we can, I think this, this swamp is just too infested. Too polluted, I don't think, first of all, the American government ain't broke. It's not broke, so you ain't gonna fix it, you're supposed to be on the bottom, that's how it works. This whole shit don't even work without so-called nigger backs. The whole system don't work without your back. It's built, it's built on top of you, it works perfectly fine. My, my, uh, my OGs always told me, if you don't like the game, or if you don't like the rules, stop playing the game. Now, now the thing is, they say, uh, well, Cosmo, when we got in this, nuh 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 nuh, well, I mean. Another brother asks, well, what are you willing to sacrifice to go get what you want? I'm just saying, if you gonna be in the game, you got to do what it takes to win in the game. And first things first, I think to, to, to a precursor, a precursor. To a, 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 a government should be a lobbying system. We lobby for these three things, cause these three things gonna help niggas. And our, and our dollars, even if we only giving a dollar a month, twenty dollars a year, whatever it is. You know how many Aboriginals it is and people who waking up to this, to, who would hop on this movement, it'll be millions. So we'll have the money to slush. You dig what I'm talking about, we create our own PAC. This is how you cover the money up, and then guess what, we wash it. We wash it, we write the shit off, and then pay ourselves. What you mean, what you think they're doing, that's legal? I ain't saying nothing that was illegal, I'm just saying if you gonna play the game, know the rules and know how to take advantage of them. Then Trump, I will say this about Trump, I'ma give, I'ma give Trump this, I knew Trump was different. When she said, why don't you show them people your tax return, she said, I don't pay taxes, stupid, and neither do you.
Now he got, now everybody else gonna have to show their tax returns since he had to, so now we really gonna see who been being criminals.
And then they threw that stuff out in the su- in the southern, in the southern district. He didn't even get hit with that. So we didn't see none of it, he still didn't show it. This is what people got, listen, this nigga, this, I will say this about, Trump a cold nigga.
He is cold.
He cold, he cold.
I couldn't believe people didn't like him, like he just, why, everybody wanna be gangster, this is what this dude is doing, gangster shit.
He gangster shit.
Man, come on.
Of Iran, he said, he said to the Shah of Iran, he said, uh, 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 excuse me, Afghanistan, he said. We gonna withdraw these troops in the next two weeks or so, he said, look, if one American die.
Yep.
He said, the one, the boy put a picture on the, he put a picture of his, of his, of his thing on the table. He said, I'm gonna kill you. And then the lady was looking at Trump, you know, the little, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the tr- uh, the transcriber? That, that speak, turn, speak English to, uh, or speak Afghani to the Afghan guy for you, and trans- uh, translate the English. He said, tell him I said, I'mma kill him, she looked at him, he said, tell him. And then he slid that nigga a, 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 a picture of his goddamn house and his kids and all that shit. He was like, nigga, I'll wipe you out, he said, if anybody die, anybody. As we, as we getting up out of here, say I'mma turn this place to a parking lot. I never, I listen, I never seen it done.
Not in my lifetime.
You can say what you want. That boy went and, listen, he, he hold, uh, 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 Jim Jong Un. He called that nigga Rocket Man. Listen, he called the nigga Rocket Man. I knew Trump was different right then, I said, this nigga cra- we ain't never even, you ain't never even seen a president.
He makes mean tweets.
I'm not caping for the nigga, I don't, I'm not, he not my buddy. My thing is, I think they are, uh, just Democrat and Republican, they are just two fangs in one snake's mouth. It's just about which one you, you gonna get bit with.
And that's, and that's what I came aboard to say online, to say.
I'm still voting for him, I don't care what y'all say.
It's the same snake with the same two fangs, my brother, I agree with you now, yeah.
Yeah, we been hearing that too long from, uh, people who ain't did us no good and fucking up shit, so we gonna try something different this time.
Cosmo, where you at, which state you in?
I'm in Detroit.
That's where you from? Oh, I'm just thinking of the accent, cause you kept saying, y'all, y'all, I'm like, oh my goodness.
Yeah, I thought he was New York.
No, I think New York, I'm thinking more like Atlanta or.
You know what it is?
It's very southern.
I'mma tell you what you hearing, uh, I, I graduated from high school in Virginia.
Oh, there you go, there it is.
I, I ain't gonna lie, uh, I do have a, I notice it now, I didn't, when I went down there, I didn't notice I, I had a. A northern like twang, you dig what I'm saying? And over the years that I lived down there, I kinda picked up a southern drawl.
Yeah, Virginia, that's what it is.
Yeah, tide water.
My, my husband from Virginia.
Shout out, shout out Mr. Willie.
No, 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 Willie, uh, uh, Willie's not my husband, Willie's my old man, my husband passed away.
Okay, shout out.
I lost my husband in two thousand nineteen. Yeah, I know, two thousand eighteen, they're from, um, a very country part of Virginia, um, called Chase City. Now Willie, Willie is what you call.
Where is Chase City at, I ain't even never heard of it.
It's like, um, a mile away, uh, from.
The Petersburg something, Pete something, Saint, it's Peter something. It's a, it's a, it used to be a shirt factory that was the major industry down there, cause my ex-mother-in-law.
Vicksburg, is you talking about Vicksburg?
Nah, bruh, it's, 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 it's in a, it's, it's, I think it's.
You gotta look it up, it, they in the country, I mean.
It's a country.
Outhouse on their land, that's how country it is.
Ah, damn.
And a whale that you go to to fetch the whale and he, when he was little, he went to go get the eggs from the roost or the chicken, listen. I'm a city guy.
But you know what they didn't do? They didn't get sick.
No, they didn't.
Them people didn't get sick, they ain't have all that GMO food.
They live on was the street name of their family, they owned it, um, it's huge.
And that's funny you said that, the ve- the very first two streets paved up here in this, in this little hood that I'm from. Uh, uh, i- is, is where the niggas stayed, right? And we was living with the, with the quote-unquote Indians, who look like niggas too. The very first two streets are called Jones and Harrington, them my people, they mi- they migrated up here.
And there's this Smith and Brockton, Smith and Brockton, I swear for goodness, and their.
They named the street after them, didn't they?
Yep.
See?
Yep. They Indians.
Yeah, uh, we still got our land, I, you know what I mean, I don't.
I can't get over that damn outhouse.
I think we can get something together and propose something to him before we even start, but before the election happens.
I, I don't see why not.
As a group, I think we can get his attention, and I've said it before to several people, I don't know, I'm not into. I ain't, you know, I ain't been into politics like that and how close you can get to stuff like that, but I know that I be watching them rallies. And if we went in that motherfucker deep as mug, we might get some heads to turning, if we was deep.
But look, but what make the heads turn? What make the head turn is the dollar. That's what make the head turn, cause you can only, you can, you can have the right guy and it'd only be one guy, but that's the right one. And he turn everybody head, oh, that's the, that's the, uh, the head financial officer of the, um. American Indian PAC. The AIPAC. Is somebody, somebody listening? Listen, I know y'all not listening, but your kids is listening. Somebody gonna create the American Indian PAC.
We got Chief Curious up on the panel, hey Chief, let's let him get it in, y'all.
No, no, I was just, I was just ca- gonna, um, respond to Cosmo, you're correct.
I'll be right back, y'all got it.
Like I say, my brother, you said it right when you said the same snake with the two fangs, and it's, it's up to each individual, it's your choice. But I'm like this, if we gonna stand on being Indian, then we need to stand on being indigenous and stop, stop playing they game. That's, that's the problem, we, a lot of us still wanna straddle the fence and, and not try to cut away from the system or. Do what you can to, to be out from in the system, meaning by voting and so forth and so on, so I.
When y'all say that, didn't we create the government, ain't that what y'all say? This is our government that they corrupted and made and turned into what they wanted.
Exactly, but it's not.
Their government.
Okay, so.
It's, it's not our government now, so we can't keep saying, if we created the government back in seventeen seventy-six. And it's not that now, so how do you, how do you say that you indigenous, but you wanna vote for the primary? Meaning that you a citizen of the United States, which is Washington DC, how can you say that?
I don't believe, I, I have a whole different mindset on what's happening and I don't wanna get into that because nobody, everybody will call me a conspiracy theorist. Although that's been like my title for, for about seven years now, that's been my title, but it's way, it's deeper than that.
It's my title too, sis.
You know, it's alre- it's already been done, that constitution and the, the whole, it's a republic now.
But copper goddess, how can everything that you, how can everything that they calling conspiracy? That was just conspiracy two, three, four years ago, we seem to have been proven true.
I know, but it, it, to some minds it is. And, um, I just have some other things, and it, I, I have my own thing going on. And it's, it's proving it within my soul, these things are coming into fruition that I had in my psyche already, so I'm watching it all unfold. And good things are gonna happen for us soon, I just want us to get our American Indian status out there in the mainstream. Because I see it on the social apps, we knocking them down with the knowledge anytime of somebody come and try to, uh, you know. Discredit the, the knowledge that we found, we knocking them down all in the comments, our people is up, we are seeing. The American Indian is rose, the tribe is up.
So I was with, you know, I do, I got a handyman business, right? I'm one of the ones that you talk about using your hand, Cosmo, but anyway, bruh, but, but anyway, so, uh. I was, uh, at one of these, uh, my customer's house today, she had eighty. She's an eighty-four-year-old sister, right? And I'm showing her and I'm telling her, and then she said, well, on my birth certificate, I was born in nineteen forty. And on my birth certificate, it had me down for white, and I went and changed it, said you was a, you American Indian.
I told you.
You just didn't know it, so you're right, sis, that is the information.
Oh, yes, thank you for doing that, we have to talk to our elders, they got them under, uh, MKUltra real bad. They really got them under this.
I don't know what elders you talking about, but here, all the old people.
No, not here, I'm talking about the places that, uh, you know. Yesterday, she ain't having, she ain't having it, it's Kamala all the way, and I've been telling her for six years what's going on. She still ain't having it, they hard-headed, and they, their brains have been washed or something. And those that have got their bioweapon, I think it did something to them too, they foggy brain.
I don't know, but all the elders here, they going for Trump that I know, the black ones, that's real elder, and they seventy and eighties. They going for Trump, I am not lying, they be calling, the, um, they be, um, hitting the, um. Hey, girl, I, the elderly people be hitting the, um, ignore button when them Democratic people calling to ask them if they would make calls. Because a lot of senior citizens would come in to make calls for. Because a lot of senior citizens would come in to make calls for campaigning, make the phone calls. Yeah, girl, they be hitting the um damn um. Ignore button on their cell phone, talking about they going to play bingo.
I wish the brother, damn, the brother curious fellow.
Yeah, you'll be, you'll be back, you'll be back.
Uh, Copper Goddess, Sister Bethy, I came into some information while I was uh searching, you know, um preparing for this uh. Hawk School debate. You dig what I'm talking about? Um. Yeah, that's my nigga too, man. I hate I got to do this to him. You know what I mean? And uh. But the debate is. Which spiritual system has more Aboriginal hi- history in it? Is it a wa- or Aboriginal culture? Is it a WASP or is it Quran? So, you know what I mean? Um, so uh, he, he, he don't have no idea what he really into. But um, my thing is simply this. I found out.
Of course, hit the link. Straight smoke, anybody can hit the link.
Yeah, hit the link. Hey, um, uh, Copper Goddess, remember what you just brought up with. Uh, the founding of the United States and that they copied their constitution from the Iroquois, right?
Yes, sir.
Who did the Iroquois copy it from? I just found that information.
I'm selling all your cookies. That nigga's running out my mouth too much.
No, no, I can, listen. I, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna give it all away. It don't matter. Cause either way, the impact of this. Is a megaton light bomb. It's still gonna be felt when I, when I let it out in the debate. You can't debate this. And then I like smoke. I'm not gonna, I mean, uh, not smoke, but Hawk. I like Hawk. You dig what I'm talking about? He one of the coldest content producers on YouTube.
Saying you gotta be real careful with Hawk School. I've been watching Hawk School like.
I know, and.
Years I've been watching Hawk School for a long time.
Yeah.
I, I mean before, look. I know you got confidence in yourself, but. Don't sleep off school. That motherfucker ain't no joke. That's a real nigga right there.
As a warrior, as a real warrior, a real fighter, I don't sleep on nobody. You better just be training.
I know, I know that.
And then then, see, Sister Bethy, you getting me hyped up. Cause see. I wrote two parts to my third round. I wrote two parts to my third round. One, where I'm just continuing giving information. And two, where I bought, I, I take the legs off of Islam and Allah.
When is y'all's debate?
September, Friday the thirteenth.
Okay, that's um, what?
Two, three Fridays from now.
My birth, my birthday is the nineteenth.
Oh.
Oh, shout out, shout out.
Oh yeah, I'm a Virgo, Virgo. No, hell no. I'm a Virgo.
My sister birthday in a couple days. Shout out, shout out my baby sis. Her birthday is the twenty-ninth. Is she a Virgo?
Up August, yeah, at the same day as Michael Jackson.
Sis.
You like the last day of Virgo though, ain't you?
No, the last day of Virgo was September twenty-second.
I'm like, what, what, where should we start this? Cause he had said we need to have, we need to lobby, have a lobbying campaign going on for the American Indian. Uh, the no-nonsense American Indian Party. Um, and we need, when we need to do it ASAP? Or we need to wait till Trump get in? I think we need to do it ASAP. I think we need to make our voices known now.
But think about this, you didn't move instantly into the Democratic Party. Took you two years. Remember Jesse and them tried to come in in seventy? And tried to take over in seventy, after King and them had got shot, right? He tried to come in seventy, but they had to come back. They had to come back. They had to re-group. They had to dot their i's, cross their t's. And then they came in with all the niggas in seventy-two.
I can't stand them. I can't stand Al Sharpton. Jesse Jackson, Roland Martin. I don't like none of them dim, dimbo's. But I tell you, man, I, I will not let my mother on this panel. My channel will get shut down if I let my mother on this panel.
Oh Lord, she'll get to telling.
Oh my God, don't get her to talking about them three niggas.
I know one thing, that is stirring up the people, y'all. And it's that article that you showed that uh, that sat you brought to our attention. Now, when I show my aunties and my uncles and my family that article, I saw a light beam in they, in their eyes that I have not seen before. That article about the Negro has billions in America and that we are indeed not African. You cannot send them from which they did not come. That sent a light, a lightning bolt through them. They all looked at each other and got in sync like, huh, well, ain't that some?
This is how I know you was really talking to some old folks. Cause that's the first thing they gonna say.
They said it, all of them. They looked at each other and said, huh, ain't that some?
It, what it does is it um. Brings back their repressed memories. See, we, we many years live with repressed memories.
Yeah.
And the little bit, the, the smallest piece of information will trigger that light. And that's when shit start, me, 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 me. It's like. It's like the lot, like the slot machines. When you hear, it only takes one thing to trigger your repressed memory. Everything start coming back so fast that it scares you. Then you remember who you are. That's why a lot of nights I go to sleep and I'm like, what if I just wake up? Just let us be the fucking Indians back in our real status. Cause to me, it's like this long fucking nightmare. And then we woke up.
You know what, Sister Bethy?
I swear, I think that all the time.
You right though. I, I got a, I got an uncle named Uncle Bill, right? He eighty-eight years old. I, a few years ago, I got to asking him a quick, uh, you know, you, you know, getting into my, to, to my genealogy. I said, did uh, I said, did you know you was Indian? He said, yeah, we knew he was Indian. I said, did anybody like talk about it? He said, nah, we just didn't talk about it.
Listen, let me tell you something. Straight smoke, then I'ma let you go. Now, my aunt Viola has Alzheimer's. And so does my mom. Now, um, but the thing about people who have Alzheimer's. Their long-term memory is intact for years.
Right.
It's their short-term memory that's messed up. So. My cousin Marky let me speak to her. And video, or see her on video. And I said, hey Aunt Bola. She said, boy, you look like daddy. Daddy. That's her sister, my grandmother. And I said, Aunt Viola, when y'all was little. When you was about thirteen in South Carolina. And remember the house burned down and, and what did people uh, uh, come and make y'all get out? She said, yeah. And me, believing society, thinking it was fucking white people cause of the stories. She said. It just took her back and shit. She was shaking and I, I, she said. The soldiers, they came and told us, we had to get out. Black soldiers. I hit the fucking table. I said, I'll be goddamn. Black soldiers. It was our own fucking people. She said, they made us, told us, hey, you, get out. And then she went back. To breathing and Marky, I was like, Marky's like, okay, that's enough. Cause that's traumatizing for them.
And they have regrets. They have regrets.
The black soldiers and Marky was like, okay, that's it. That's it. Cause I didn't wanna get her sick because she's old.
Yeah.
And you know, she's ninety-three at the time. And I was like, that's it. When she said black, that was enough for me.
You gotta get out.
That's why they targeted the old people, y'all, during uh the pandemic. Because they know.
I'll be damned. This was in nineteen twenty-nine.
Yeah.
They had to leave South, because the house was burning. It was gunfire to get out. But now, now. These soldiers or whatever she's thinking about, they, because in police uniforms, they could look like soldiers to, 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 to her.
Yeah.
So, black. So she says, no, I, I thought they were white. And she said, no, they are black. And they told us, you gotta get out of here and leave. So that's when they had to leave South Carolina. And they came here and they been here in Connecticut ever since that day. But Mark, my cousin Marky, who is a pastor in Virginia, okay, he just talking about Jesus, her son. He said, that's enough for mom today. And I understood it. I said, okay, well, and then she just. Out of the blue said, don't forget to bring me my stockings. So I think the last time she spoke to her sister, my grandmother. Probably was supposed to bring her some stockings from a long time ago. And I said, okay, auntie, I'll bring you your stockings.
I know a lot of y'all uh, don't believe in the great spirit. You know what I mean? Weird, which is weird to me. Yeah, I think that's weird if you don't, you know. But, but the great spirits say.
Wait a minute, y'all, because there, there you go. Hold up, baby. Let smoke go. We don't wanna bring it religiously, y'all. I'm gonna give you a night to talk.
I was about to, I was about to, I was about to let you know why the mind is able to go back into its stores so perfectly. He says that uh, when you are close to death or in pressure situation. Pressure situations, the mind recalls perfectly. So when you are close to death or you are in high-pressure situations, you ever did something and you ain't even know you did it? A cup fell and you just oop, picked it off or, or something was about to happen. You swerved out the way and missed some people hitting somebody or did, you know what I mean? He said, the mind uh, is re- is, is able to go into its stores. Because it's, the, the mind is not the brain. The mind and the brain are two different things.
Brain was really in the gut, but go ahead. You, you got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the, it uh. But your, your mind is what remembers. It's what learns. It's what thinks. Your brain is just a, 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 a place where electrical.
Surface.
You, you know what I mean? Yeah, but the thing that runs it is the mind. You know what I mean? I don't wanna, I don't wanna get spooky on people, you know what I mean? Or nothing like.
No, these are conversations I like to have, so.
It's not the brain.
Be there. Look, who I wanna be there.
Put your information, contact information in the bag, baby.
How you doing?
I'm anxious to hear.
Uh, Calvin.
Absolutely. You say, is it Calvin with a K or a C?
Mute your mic, mute your mic, honey.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, y'all.
No, I just muted him cause I don't want him telling his personal business.
I'm sorry, y'all.
Go ahead, straight smoke.
Hey, Copper Goddess. What's going on with all of you all? Sister Bethy, this was very enlightening to see today. Very enlightening to see today. Now, I know how I was in the chat and I do apologize for that. But at the same token, I have to look at certain things because you pinpointed something that just struck a serious nerve with me. I see, I see the indoctrination in people hardcore. For real. And, and, and when you, when you apply pressure and let them know that you see it, that's when they consistently say, oh, no, 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 no. But they keep highlighting their indoctrination. But that's, that's not, nonetheless, nonetheless. What I came up here to say today is that.
Don't sleep, Ernest. He ain't as stupid as you think he is. Sometimes we gotta play the role like we really with it and, and with it. You heard about from the motherfucking hood. Listen, I'll talk to you another day about that, but go ahead and privately.
I kid you not, that I see how strongly it was done to all of the elders. I see it. I see it. Now, was I one that always, you know, went down that road? No, I was the one that was questioning my grandmother, grandfather. You know, aunties, uncles, all of them. To understand why would they consecutively make the same bad decision repetitively. Repetitively. You know that Jesse Jackson, now I'm from Chicago. You know that Jesse Jackson was on the east side and he sucked the city dry. Sucked the city dry. But y'all stepped, kept going out. And showing support for this. So it's like, what kind of fool is you? You an old fool for real, for real? Now, did, could I say that? No, I couldn't. But that's what I was thinking to myself. The reason I jumped up here today to, to, to say anything is because. It's so painful to watch. It's so painful to watch. People just say, no, I'm not this, I'm not that. And clearly, all your talking points is coming from the party that is hurting. Clearly. Cause anything that you should see, should see, should be so crystal clear. Just like Copper Goddess brought up all of Trump's plan. You don't see nothing on this other side. They always hit the same thing, abortion. Always. I don't care what nobody say, it's always about abortion. For any man to sit up here and talk about abortion at, at length at all. Something wrong with him. Something wrong with him. Because that's not a topic that I would care to talk about. I don't know no man that would wanna talk about abortion. I, I can't see it. I just cannot see that. The one thing I'm looking at is security. Security for my family. That means money, food, shelter, clothing, land. That's what I'm talking about. So any, anything else, that sounds like you're a part of something that you honestly don't know nothing about. Now, I don't know this man. I don't. And I'm not saying that he is not of who he say he is. I'm not saying that. What I am saying is that it's strong on him. It's, it's just strong on him. And also today, we just gave birth to a new girl.
Oh, congratulations.
Oh, you got a little strizzle.
You ain't nothing, boy.
Aw, that little baby. Just tell my niece, I say, hey.
She's here. I'm so happy. My birthday tomorrow. She's today.
Oh, man, that's crazy. How you do that?
Hey, man, you wanna know the truth? Proper planning pre- prevents poor performance.
Performance, eh, yeah. That's right. They say it's five Ps, right?
Hey, y'all, look in that back at my message real quick.
All right, hold on.
Hey, get your motherfucking laugh on.
Straight up.
No, I'm not kidding you not. Let me tell you something. I've known since I was two years old. Two in my daddy's barber shop. Get your motherfucking laugh. You gotta, look, you gotta do what you gotta do.
Yeah. Yeah. That's hard.
Hey, listen, that's, uh, you know what, and. Listen, man, listen, this is.
He fucking did a Judge Joe Brown on you. Uh, uh, we Afro-American. Uh, my, 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 my. Mother is, uh, what, what'd he say? His father is Barbados, Barbados. No, I'm talking about Ernest. From Barbados, right? So you know they a fucking Indian if they from Barbados. And then hi- his, his mother is uh, from North Carolina, Indy.
You know what I mean? So.
Come on now.
Y'all made these rules. Listen, y'all give, y'all give me leeway to play it one way. And you also gave me leeway to play it the other way. Don't get mad at me when I choose to play the game my way. You go, listen, listen, this guy, you got, hey, listen, and we ain't talking about nothing but benefits and tangibles. If you ain't talking about benefits and tangibles, don't even. If you ain't talking about benefits and tangibles, don't even talk to me about politics. What the hell going on? You don't know what the fuck, excuse me, you don't know what's going on if you ain't talking about benefits and tangibles.
I will say one thing, though, something that hasn't gotten put out there yet. Um, did anybody see the list of nominations for um heads of departments yet?
No.
You're gonna love it. You're gonna love it.
For Trump?
No, no, this is not, this is, it has not, it has something to do with him. All right, so, all right, let me give you a little inside baseball. Inside baseball. Does anybody know who cur- um Admiral Mike Rogers is?
Rogers. Yeah, he a five-star uh.
General.
General, yeah.
Yes, yes. Do you know that that was the one that went to Trump and told him he was being spied on? He's the man that brought Trump to come and run for office.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, Trump was, Trump was um vetted by the military to run for president. He didn't make.
Yeah, he was. I I do remember that. I do remember that.
Because they already seen flaws in the military because of D E I projects. This is real spill. So the next uh department heads are the ones that has to be replaced. It's not the lower and the middle, it's the upper echelon that's poison. That's the whole problem. That's the whole problem. If everybody remember when Eric Snowden came out, this is something I was gonna do a build on, but. I'll just, I'll just go ahead and say, Sister Bethy, this is what I was trying to get you to see. When I was uh emailing you, I was like, I need you to see this 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 collaboration I put together. But this is something that I've been studying for over probably like twenty-eight years. Yeah, I'm, I I do everything by. I wanna say Homeland Security D O D. I'm a, I'm a military guy. I I understand, I understand that stuff very, very well. So I I see how, you know, you can be um, uh, what do you wanna call it? A contractor, if you will, for lack of better terminology. But if you know the parties, well, not the parties, if you know the people and the places that they are, that's why you will see. Certain things happen and certain things not happen. That's why you seen everything that um, like I said. When Eric Snowden brought out what the FISA court was going to do previously, you're seeing the ramifications of it now. That's what I'm trying to drive at. Everything was systematically put in place for what you are seeing now. I know it sounds funny. But if I showed you it, you would be like, wow, because no one has took the time out to put it in chronological order. If you go back and look at how everybody voted, when I say voted, I want you to think about the extensions that they have given. The uh alphabet boys to utilize all of their mainframe systems, you know? Because the one thing that one people do not look at is cybersecurity. They don't know what cybersecurity is. They just now recently heard about this in the last, I wanna say, eight years. There's a whole intelligence operation for it. It's been an intelligence operation for it since nineteen twenty-six. I have something that I very much need you to see, and it's gonna be very eye-opening. It's gonna, and. I'm going to tell you now, I'm about to start doing docu-series. And that's going to be the focal point of it all.
We'll wait to see it. I look forward to seeing it. But I'm about to get out of here cuz I've been on for four hours. I love y'all so much, but I'm tired. You know, I gotta hit that floor in the morning at four. And I I I do, I'm 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 really tired. And two segments in one day.
Get down there and break up that shifaro.
I know. I I I, what I do, I get up from here. I don't. While I was sitting here that whole time, I was cooking Willie dinner cuz he be in here and. Um garlic bread, my goodness. I'm sitting back here eating like little Miss Piggy. Cuz I made pasta. Pasta with no meat, you know, and sauce and I put green peppers, onions, red peppers, orange peppers. All in that sauce. It's good. And now. I need to shower and relax so I can watch Smoke and Siggleon. That's what puts me to sleep. I go watch Smoke. I don't really watch no other channels but Dane, um Smoke, and and Bap. That's it. I I. And I do my thing, but I'm tired, y'all. I really am. And I got all of y'all's information. So. Cosma, I do wanna um do a bill. Maybe we could do this shit tomorrow night. And talk about the crazy shit about the mind and the um. Repressing memory. I'm gonna get into that tomorrow. You got me hyped now. Cuz now I don't feel strange cuz I thought. I was the only one who thought like that.
Telling you, Sister Bethy, you just gotta get around like minds who wanna hear what you got to say. There is a, there is a space for you. Uh for people who are are already receptive to what most common, well, understand this. If you are having weird thoughts today or what people are saying is weird, you're the normal one.
Yeah, I I, you know.
They're weird.
I I I did not think people literally thought like me. When I would say that, I said, you know, I'm gonna keep my mouth closed cuz people gonna think. That something wrong with me. And I I can't wait to do this tomorrow night cuz I'm gonna tell you. The experiences as a little girl where my mind used to travel and shit and I would interpret shit. I, we'll talk tomorrow.
Yeah, cuz it's.
I know I'm not the only one out there.
No, cuz there's some things, there's some things like, like you don't, we, like, that we see all the time that we don't think about, right? But if I showed you, you'll be like, oh, that dang, how does that happen? You know what I mean? When somebody point at it like, no, 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 right there. And you say, oh, I didn't even know that was there. It's it's a different type of feeling you did when I'm talking about when you get around people who get it.
Man, I'm talking about shit like sitting on the bed as a little girl and and. And interpreting that, we know, um.
Hold on, did you time travel? Did you go somewhere?
I don't know if th- this shit was weird. When I was a little girl, I was sit, we lived in the projects, high-rise. And I was sitting down and I was what you call. I I dreaming or daydreaming, I don't know. But I seen, I seen all this water. Start coming towards us, uh, uh, a lot of water and. The man that was standing there closed the curtain so I couldn't see. Said, you shouldn't be looking at this. And then I woke up and so I told my mother. And she said, you're different. She said, I think you was probably.
They call them.
On 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 the ark when God was destroying the world. But she said, it's gonna be fine. That's what she told me. And. She said to me, as much as I thought my mother hated me. She gave me the special name in the family. I have a very different name. Everybody think it's Bethy. It's not. That's my short name.
Right.
My name is Be The Owner. B E is is spelled exactly the way it sound. Be The Owner. That's my real name, Be The Owner. Nobody in the world has my name. And my mother said, I gave you a special name cuz you a special baby. And I used to always think she was bullshitting just cuz she wanted me to buy her a pack of cigarettes.
I'm here to tell you, everybody can do it. And it's like a muscle. The more you use it, and Sister Bethy, what you don't understand, what you just explained. And I know, I know, I know we talking to some spooky ass. Yeah, I don't give a, listen, I don't care. I'm gonna say, if you don't believe in the great spirit, you ain't half the Indian you think you is. And this world is so fantastic, more fantastic. Than you can even ever possibly think of. The, that that ability that you're talking about is called suisse. It's clairvoyance, clairaudience. But also, it's the misunderstanding of time travel. What y'all don't understand, let me get, let me get, let me get him a little, a little bit, Sister Bethy, cuz they try to say, oh, Cosma, you spooky, woo 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 woo. No, nigga, I done did the dark work. I done went inside and did the hard stuff that you still too scared to do. What I'm telling you is this is the misunderstanding of time travel. You don't go in a machine and then go to a time. No, you go into self and bring time to you.
Yeah, we'll talk about it tomorrow. We'll 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 get into the stories. Who who are you, Kunta?
Hey, how's it going there?
Uh, hi, how are you, Kunta?
I'm doing all right.
What can we do for you, sweetheart?
I'm just saying, we need to go ahead and vote for Kamala.
Get off.
See ya, bro. Kunta, we not gonna vote for Kamala.
We need to go ahead, put you on that tree and shop.
Wait, 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 y'all, don't attack. Wait, 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 y'all, wait.
I mean, she's gonna give you six thousand dollars child credit. For new, new, new house owner.
Couldn't she had did that on day one, bro?
Man, they about to cook you, bro.
There's tangibles.
No, no, couldn't she had done that on day one, bro? How is that OTK? He does not talk like that.
Background giggling.
Ho, 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 hold up, y'all, for real.
Okay.
See, I I don't like to make people feel uncomfortable coming to the panel. And I, this is what I wanna prevent. I want people to feel welcome to be able to come on my show and voice their opinion, even if they disagree with us. You know, I want a good audience. And I want.
You wanted tangibles. She's giving you tangibles. I don't see what the problem is.
Well, I I I don't, I'm I'm not looking for handouts. That's the things we are. And I I I.
You want them reparations, don't you?
No, I don't.
I'm not, I've never, I've never fought for reparations. I actually got a lawsuit pending against it.
You want some chicken, chicken giblets and collard greens and.
Yeah, she offering that.
Oh, you are too funny, collard greens.
Have your black girls uh shaking their rumps.
I'm not a black girl. I don't be shaking my rump. It shakes on its own by itself.
That's kinda like a black thing. They do kinda shake by themselves.
It shake by itself.
I got a real question, though.
Oh, he fell off. That was a troll. He fell off. He was funny. He was funny.
Sound like Judge Joe Brown a little bit.
That was Jeremiah trolling.
He talking about we can shake our rumps and stuff as black girls. But I had to tell him the truth. We don't shake our butts. It shakes on its own by itself. It got to be jammed. It got to be jammed cuz jelly don't shake like that.
If she can do all of this on the upcoming, how come she didn't do that in day one?
She in office now.
She's still in office. She's still gotta choose whether she gonna be black or 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 Indian yet, so.
East Indian from. Oh, Hindu, 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 whatever. She's not us. We're different. We are not from the same soil. We're, we are not. But y'all, I gotta get out of here. I love y'all. I gotta go.
Thank you.
You are all welcome. Don't y'all ever forget this in our day, okay? Don't y'all ever forget it.
Damn.
Those are actual signs from our day. But Cosma, I'mma, I'mma email y'all and catch y'all tomorrow.
Okay.
I love, I love y'all in the chat.
Love you too. Be safe, sis.
Be safe, y'all. I'm out. Oh, man, I'm out. I'm so tired. I'm going to relax and watch Smoke Signal. Love, y'all.